All right, you can proceed. We'd like to just kind of keep the same system that we've been doing, just go line item by line item.
Okay.
We also, if there's anything that you requested that you don't see that's in here, we'd also like to be informed by it.
Okay.
And the floor is yours, Mr. McCaffrey.
Okay, I'd like to do a brief overview really quick, so I'm gonna read my overview.
Yes, sir, please take your time.
Okay. So far this fiscal year, the libraries are once again on schedule to have revenues exceed expenditures. We've made a push to right-size some part-time rates in line with inflation. That also considers additional hours worked as we're now open, more hours at both libraries than we were before COVID. Also this year, we're engaging on a program to do a great deal of maintenance and upgrades to both buildings, an effort that will continue into next fiscal year. Note as a reminder that the library does not get any revenue from the general fund. It is by and large a self-supporting entity with some state aid money and TIFA aside, funded through the annual millage. All costs and services the library uses for staff, bond debt, and operations are factored in. We have a long-term plan that accounts for the atrophy of the millage rate over time and considers inflation and other factors as well. This past year, we checked out over 170,300 items, a small amount lower than the previous year, and our computer users registered 32,658 sessions, a significant amount higher than last year and one of the highest usage rates in the state. This upcoming year, we continue on the path we have set forth in previous two years and continue to set the following objectives. Continue on a positive, a responsible track on salaries, wages each year. Make sure we're meeting fringe benefit costs equitably with staff. Continue to add to the fund balance and save for future stability of the library. Account for the structural maintenance repair of both buildings. A few items of note this upcoming year include the following lines. 738, 738, 7.1 part-time, there's a sizable increase in this line as it now accurately represents the additional costs due to more work hours and inflation over the last few years. Addition there was a cost overrun over the past couple of years, so I'm correcting that line. It has been right-sized to make it more accurate from 505 to 674K. I do not anticipate another adjustment of this level. This has been done other departments and here we do the full-time salaries. This accounts for inflation and makes sure we're keeping track of our part-timers a little better. Line 738, 738, 981, capital outlay this year and likely next year, the library will be working aggressively to make improvements to the building and to the general patron experience overall. This will include more carpet, new furniture, cement work, painting, landscaping, ball repair, and a host of other items. Some of these items will be done by maintenance, however, not all of them can be covered under this umbrella. We have done some carpet work, landscaping, computer replacement so far this year with more activity to come. So that's all for the overview. A thank you for your time and consideration.
Question.
Thank you.
First and foremost, thank you so much for presenting that with us and going out of your way to do that. That's extremely helpful because you answered some of the questions even though I had them already had them highlighted.
Okay, thank you.
My one question to you is, and it's only because somebody brought it up to me.
Okay.
They complimented me about how amazing our dear behind libraries are. They said, but why can't we have any vending machines in there? And I said, I don't think you can eat in there. They said, well, come on, man.
Well, it is, it is something we've been debating. We originally had no vending machines and we were thinking about adding some. Our policy was no food or drink allowed in the library for many years to deal with carpet, but we've moved away from that policy de facto. We still have it, they use, not supposed to eat and drink really, we just don't enforce it. But we are thinking of just removing it so people can just drink their coffee. And we're thinking about some vending machines for maybe cold food, like pretzels or chips or something like that.
Oh yeah, something like chips.
Yeah, something like that. So we are thinking about that. It is a matter of space, though. We need to make sure wherever we're putting it that it's in a spot at both libraries that's, that'll work. I think a JFK might be a little more suited the way it's designed, but yeah, I can look into that and see.
Can you look into that and just get back to us? That's something I'd like to, you know, I'd like to even see in this budget.
Okay.
If we can somehow, some way squeeze in having a vending machine in there, because it's not the first time that I've heard it.
Okay.
And I've always said, you know, and then I started thinking till like being at the undergraduate library UGL at Wayne State and thinking I would always grab like pretzels or I'd grab Cheez-Its or whatever it may be. And I would eat them upstairs quietly as I crunched, everybody would be looking over at me, but.
Did you have a microphone?
You know, no. Or maybe I just really thought because it was so quiet and I would hear myself crunch that I thought everybody was hearing in on me crunching, but maybe it really wasn't that loud anyhow.
Okay.
So if that's something that we can maybe consider.
Yeah, sure, I'll see what I can do about that this year and.
And then I also like, I mean, maybe we can even go out for bids to see if a company will come out and put it out there so it costs us nothing.
Usually that's the way they work. They don't cost us anything for the most part.
Yeah.
So yeah, that would definitely be part of the.
Well, I was thinking maybe, you know, if you guys, if we wanted to self-operate it or if, but you probably, we probably don't have the time for all that, but.
Okay, well, we can look at different ways of accomplishing, maybe we sell them at the.
Basically, do they pay us just to put the machine in the library?
Correct, correct, that's the way it would work. We'd get usually percentage.
Okay, that was my only thing that I had also assigned written here for you.
Okay.
Recording any progress?
Okay.
Thank you, councilman.
Okay, any other questions or do you want to go line by line or any questions?
Looks like we don't really have any questions. I mean, everybody's pleased with our librarian and his position and the way he's moving our libraries.
Okay, well, thank you very much then.
Healthy snacks, healthy, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll look into getting something. It's been something that people have asked about and initially we didn't have any, we didn't allow anything, but yeah, we'll start moving that way.
And all I really said was I don't believe we allow, are we doing page 65 or no?
Oh, 65, okay. Did you want me to go over?
We can go line 65.
Yes, please.
Oh, okay.
No, we did 64 right now, correct?
Okay, yep.
Do you want to start with the revenues?
Let's just start with the revenues, just a couple of some of these big ones. And just so that some of the, you know, those at home.
Okay, so it looks like the millage is up 5% as capped by Headley for this year. State grant, that's the, that's the, actually, it's not state grant, it's actually federal grant for $206,000, 13th district grant. We've spent around, it hasn't been recorded here yet, but we spent around, I want to say about 40,000 to 50,000 of that so far. Local community stabilization, share, contribution from general fund. That contribution from general fund is not a contribution of the general fund, it's actually the TIFA payment. That is just a pass-through. Miscellaneous income revenue, there is, usually those are donations for the friends that they sometimes give us to, for city expenditures. The interest line looks like it's a little conservative, which is good, so I think we'll, I think we'll probably exceed the $100,000 there, so. Reimbursement from our insurance company is.
So what's the interest? Can you clear?
It's just the interest that you're receiving on your investments in the library, the various Morgan Stanley and other investments. So this year, you are going to get about $160,000, but to be conservative, we just went with 100.
But you guys, automatically we will update the budget to 160 now, correct?
Well, it's 100 as a budget right now because interest rates are coming down slightly, but 160 will be what we project this current year.
Okay, so let's just say we do receive the 160.
Yeah, then it will be recorded here.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
And it will go into the library fund, whether it's over.
Yep. I still, I'm sorry, I don't understand. So it's an interest that we gain money?
Yeah, we're receiving the money.
So why is it shows like as if we're spending the money?
This is, this section is revenue. This is money that you're getting.
Okay. There's actually two interest lines if you're looking at page 65.
65 will show the debt payment interest.
Right, right. The interest on this page is the interest on our fund balance, basically. On this, on page 65, it's the interest for our debt. Okay.
Thank you.
So library donations and TIFA, that's a small amount that TIFA gives us for copiers or for doors or for various things. Let's see, state aid and penal fines. Let's see, that's at around 100. That's a combination of basically tickets that are written locally and state aid given out annually. Library fines, we basically don't fine, we have a token out there for basically lost items. Going copiers and printers is set low at 1,500. And appropriation from the balance is at zero, so that's what, that is there. Any questions on revenues?
We're okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. McCaffrey, thank you so much.
All right, on expenditures, salaries are up to 523, 985 per the salary schedule that's also included in your packet there. That includes longevity, seniority, and vacation payout that's going to be paid in addition to that. There's the 706, which is a payout for retirees previous to this. There is the part-time line, which I've gone over. The hospital fees, basically our health insurance fees on 716. On 717, our life insurance payment. Our contribution to the pension, 137, 227. Fringe benefits, 93,176. Supplies is up to 30,000 based upon projections. A lot of these items went up just a bit to account for inflation. Utilities, 125. Dues, member subscriptions, that's up to 55. That is not just magazines, but that's also our online databases and stuff like that, so our audiobooks and all that stuff, that's why that items keeps going up. The awarded grants, that's the expenditure part of the grant that we got on the first page. Contract services, 90,000, those are various services we utilize from vendors. Library network vendor, 66K, that's our, the fees that we pay to be part of the shared system. Telephones, that's our internet service, that's going down every year thanks to TLN, actually doing a good job there. Library events and programs, we boosted that up a lot this year because we're spending a lot of good money on that. It's funny going back to the people. Library print and publish, that's at 6K. Insurance, that is our, our contribution to the city's insurance policy. Repair, maintenance, and grounds, we boosted it up to 72 because we've been having just a number of issues with maintenance. As I've previously mentioned, we boosted capital outlay. We also boosted this line to accommodate as the building deteriorates, trying to make sure that we're keeping up with all the issues one at a time. Repair and maintenance equipment is at 40. Training is at 5K. Capital outlay, as I mentioned, that winds up at 165 to 320 to cover some of those additional costs like carpet and all the bollards and cement and everything. Capital outlay, other major, that's going to be kind of some more shares. Library computer electronics, 2,500. Bond principal, that's going to be 400K this year, so we're paying 400K on the bond principal. The bond is up in 2033. Contingency, that is the amount we pay to the city for the services that they provide us. Interest, 155,575. And all of that's of course the amortization, sorry, schedule. And that's it for expenditures. Any questions on that?
Council members, any question?
I have, council chair.
Yes.
I have a question about the salaries. How did we determine the increase in salaries? I mean, it seems like it's different from one person to the other.
That's a good question. In this particular case, we had a couple positions that were undervalued. I felt did a lot of work and I needed.
Can we give them?
I wanted to create some equity, so you'll notice there's three that are about the same. And the other two that are a little higher, they've been here 12 or 13 years, that's why it's a little longer. So that's why those rates are set where they're at. And I try to mostly set them by what the market is out there, what I'm seeing from competitive salaries, from surveys, from other libraries. That's how I set them.
And for the capital outlay, is that money, is that getting from the city or is getting, we're getting that money from TIFA?
Oh no, the capital outlay is coming from the library fund, completely. What the capital outlay is, is often it's used in other, in other budgets, often for like fire trucks or whatever. In this case, I'm often using it for books. This was a recent change that stayed allowed to do is you can actually use that for books. In this case, it's going to be for books and all those improvements I talked about with cement and bollards and all that stuff, as much as I can fit in in this particular budget year. There's, some of these are probably going to bleed over into next budget year too because we're probably, you know, got a lot to do, but it's better to do maintenance on these buildings now rather than later, wait in about seven or eight years.
Thank you, director.
Thank you.
As always, remarkable presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and a good team here. Michelle put a lot of good numbers in, made my job very easy, so I wanted to mention.
Thank you, Michelle. She's doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Can't wait for it, I worked for the city full-time.
Page 23.
Mayor, have you made an offer yet?
Offer?
Yeah.
What was offered?
What's that?
For what?
For Michelle.
I don't think you guys can afford her.
Are you crazy? I mean, we're paying $2 million, might as well. Offer a million, still cuts it a half.
Oh, a million?
See, look how those numbers start, you start thinking, oh wow, going on a vacation, retiring soon.
Oh, let's see.
Oh no.
How we can be all fixed? Okay.
Rick, it's not even necessary, we got, we got Karen over here, Carrie. Carrie, Carrie, not Karen, Carrie.
Okay, we're on page 23.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
Mm-hmm.
Council members, you guys okay with that? Guys ready? You can proceed.
All right. I'll just take it away and then Carrie can jump in when she needs to get some clarification. So salaries, the line item here, you have the personnel budget, which shows what the salaries are comprised of. And then next line item is part-time, that's just a slight increase from the prior year. Overtime, also just a slight increase. Commission fees, we've got $500. Clothing is 2,000 and that is budgeted as the same as last year. Hospital insurance and life insurance, both are going up about the same amount. The general government pension contribution, 133. Fringe benefits is your FICA. The supplies at 7,000, kept at the same amount as last year. Dues and memberships are up to 1,500. Engineering service, that was brought down to 10,000 from 25.
Why did we do that?
We just, we have more of the engineering services down in the contractual services line item. When we get down, I'll explain why that decreased as well.
I'm sorry, so we have contractual service for engineering service when the engineering department is out of the building department?
They are the same department, building and engineering.
Right.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Like we have an engineer, but are we going out for services?
Yeah, so you do use wage trim for some of your engineering services for different projects.
And that's all we budgeted for was 10,000?
It will be 10,000 for that and 25,000 in the contractual services. Yep. So most of your engineering is going to be done in-house.
Yeah, they still have to accommodate for some.
So what I'm saying is that, so overall contractual services for wage trim would be 35,000?
For the stuff that's charged to this department. You also have wage trim doing work for the streets funds, for the water fund. So those are in different areas of the budget.
Can you give us a breakdown of exactly what we're expected to pay wage trim throughout the year?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment.
But we can get a breakdown of what we have paid this current year and then we can do an estimate of if we continue on that trend.
Okay.
Yes.
Of all the departments, what we're expected to pay wage trim?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
Before we start, I'd like to welcome our chief of police, Jared Hart, who was with us today. Welcome back, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, lease payments, that is $10,000 as well, and that's just your vehicle leases. Yes.
Thanks, Rick.
Hold on, do you have all the vehicles you need? Rick, does this include all the vehicles you requested or are you?
No.
Last year's budget? So you didn't get no cars last year?
No, it does not.
How much are you guys, is still missing? Three more vehicles?
Yes.
About $700 apiece?
Correct.
7, 14, 21, that's $2,100 a month, times 12.
Go ahead. We had requested the 32,000 to continue forward, estimating the same monthly payment based on the current truck. That was not continued into the recommended budget.
So you need another 32,000, you're saying?
Total 32.
And do you have the, do you currently have vehicles or are they all leased, leased vehicles that?
It's coming before you, the next council meeting.
Okay, so, so hold on, so.
Councilman, just one second. Under vehicles, you have it estimated at $10,000. Okay, or I'm sorry, lease pays.
So probably this is for one vehicle only, right?
Yeah, less than one vehicle.
You need an additional $32,000. We already have three vehicles that we're paying, but we're only.
We have one vehicle that we're leasing currently, the others are old, used vehicles.
So you guys are trying to get three new leases?
Correct.
Okay.
Were they requested in this budget?
Yes.
I mean.
They were approved in the prior budget, so.
Why didn't you guys use them last year then?
It's still part of this year. We were deciding, the director was reviewing the different options to see what he wanted to proceed with.
Well, if you have it now, you should use it, so then before we, I guess, move forward with this budget, we want to make sure.
Right. It was presented to be at the last council meeting and then requested to hold off till the next one.
Who requested to hold it off? We consulted it?
It needed some changes added to it, so the changes need to be made and it'll go before council the next meeting.
Okay, so we should expect that. I'll put a, I'll put a question mark next to that. I mean, if we approve that, now, now, I'm just trying to dig deep and maybe I can save it for the next council meeting, but when you say we have these older trucks, and I know, you know, building and maintenance, we're driving around a lot, going back and forth, what is considered old?
2010 F-150, 2008.
Speak in the mic, please, Rick.
Oh, sorry. 2010 F-150, 2008 Ranger, and I think we have one of the police Durangos, and I don't know
Rick, on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the worst, or the most expected and the least expected, how severe is it that you need to have these 10 being yes, I really, really severely need it? One is like, I don't really need it. Where would you say you sit at the, at the bar today?
We need them.
So you're like, you're at a 10? You're a severe 10, I need them all. Okay?
Yes.
Okay?
And it's, and it's kind of part of their contract, and it's part of their contracts.
Who's contract?
The Carbreakers Union.
Okay. I'm asking this just so that it's, I'm being able to put it in, okay?
But the problem is we can't find anything that's cheap enough.
You know what they say, right? Good lawyer knows the law, bad lawyer knows the judge. We can, sure, we can call some.
Right.
We can, we can call some good car dealers out there. Maybe Mayor, I can help you out on that if you'd like.
We're, we actually talked to several dealers, so we're trying to get a quote. And every month, they begin a new, a new lease payment, so we have to wait till May.
Well, I want to get it before May so that we can have it before this budget is.
Council chair.
We have, so the, the April ones expire, May 1st expires, so whatever we put in front
of you, if it goes to the following month, they expire. So we have to, May 1st, they'll get the new, new plans. Every OEM has the same thing, so they have new leases coming.
Yeah, I'm familiar.
So we would have to go in the first meeting in May, so you can, you can have the latest. So one of the things that we, we did, we were going to put them at the last meeting, but the numbers were off. They had purchased, they had leased, so we wanted to be, to be clear, try to use this year's budget and, and we can calculate what next year's budget's going to be. So we can do like a one-year pay in advance on the vehicles to see how much it's going to be.
Okay.
So we'll have, we'll have the numbers with, probably with the next, well, May 1st.
Thank you.
And council chair?
Hang on one second, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, I've been tracking leases for about four months because mine's coming up pretty soon, and they seem to be dropping significantly a lot over this last month. So my next month, I expect them to be more, I mean, less, lesser. I mean, they're really dropping compared to what they were four months ago.
I agree. I mean, I got a good deal on my truck. So.
Can you give me three of them?
Yeah. I pay 400 bucks a month, fully loaded lariat. A plane?
Did you get on an A plane?
Yes, my father worked 33 years at Ford.
So there's a big difference between an A plane and an X plane.
And you worked at Ford, let's use your A plane.
No, hell no, that's not going to happen.
And council chair, I would encourage us to remember that when we sat down to start these budget meetings, we were already $3 million going the wrong way. And my question would be to the team, what repair and maintenance costs are we incurring on these current vehicles and can we survive another year?
That's a great question. So, hang on one second, councilman. That's a great question, but I think the director just said he's at a 10 and these are severe. So I mean, at the end of the day, I'm not in the building department, I don't know if you're in the building department, but the director's saying these are severe and he needs them, then I think we need to be able to find a way to accommodate the $36,000 for the year.
The reason why I ask is because I'm looking at our repair and maintenance line and it's low.
I don't know.
How much is it? Councilman?
So I know the budget is under about three and a half million, you said, but there's other departments and places where our money can be, it's still going to be cut. The budget needs to be balanced out regardless, but also the safety of our employees and the efficiency of our departments also got to, it's not an excuse that we're negative that we're going to cut services or, so if these trucks are in service, is the work going to get done, inspection's going to get done?
Thank you, councilman.
We'll put a note.
Chair, hold on. Okay, you can go ahead and, I put a question mark next to there, I'll have it added to my notes, I'll bring it up by.
816, correct.
Should have been an additional 36,000, should have had 46,000 a year in lease payments, which I still think is ultimately is pretty high.
Just go, do you mind, council chair, going back to whatever the control said.
Oh yeah, we, we.
Is that line about the maintenance, is that the one, we're talking about the vehicles, like how much it's costing a year to maintain? The line 932?
Yes, that includes vehicles and equipment.
And equipment? What line item is it?
932.
The 932.
Just vehicles, we don't use it for equipment, it's just our vehicles.
Okay.
I know we're only budgeting $2,000 and I agree with you. Let's just say we budgeted to maintain all three of them, you're spending more than I know we're only budgeting two thousand dollars and I agree with you. Let's just say we budgeted to maintain all three of them. You're spending more than thirty-six thousand dollars.
If they're under lease, they're in charge of...
Well, no, these cars are two thousand ten, two thousand and...
No, no, I'm saying the new cars.
Yeah.
Definitely taking maintenance.
Basically, it costs us a year, two thousand dollars to maintain.
Yeah, we're saying only two thousand dollars to maintain for twenty-four.
I, I think we're under budgeting that number. I think we're projecting under budget there. The change, brakes and rotors is gonna cost you a minimum of a thousand dollars.
Well, through March, we're at fourteen hundred.
Yeah, because they're not being maintained.
We're gonna keep spending money on something that's broke and keep breaking. It's gonna be the downfall of it.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if they're still broken. I think...
How, how many miles do you put on each vehicle, Director, over the year? Like, average?
Probably ten thousand.
The mic?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand a year.
So you need at least two oil changes a year. There are four vehicles, that's about eight hundred dollars right there, just oil changes. I don't know where that came from, the fourteen hundred.
Yeah, that fourteen hundred is what we actually spent from July through March.
Okay. We, we will, uh, Carrie, we'll definitely get back by the next meeting. The mayor said we'll have it at the next, uh, we'll have it on the, the next budget, or, I'm sorry, the next council, regular council meeting. So if it's on there and if not, we'll make the adjustment, uh, because there's been a lot of things that have been added and removed. I'm sure things are gonna somewhat fluctuate where we can figure it out. Thank you.
The other question mark, Council Chair, um, was on the salaries. Um, Rick had one request, uh, that he wanted to bring to your attention, because we had pulled it out.
Before we go forward, I, I also wanna, Michelle, I wanna bring something to your attention. Um, in the past, whenever we did the personnel sheets, and I had a resident actually email us, a very detailed email that I didn't get to be able to get back to it until like, right before coming into the office. But the former personnel sheets used to show what they got paid last year, what they've already gotten, and what we're expecting to pay them this year. This year, we're not showing them what they made in the past, where in the past, we always offered that, uh, the personnel sheet, so, and I know that there was, uh, um, I, I know that there were, you know, other bonuses and whatnot given into, and I've asked this from the beginning of this meeting. You know, what it, what were the, not what the salaries are, but what did somebody make on that final year? Uh, so if you can update these personnel sheets for us and, and put them on, on the website, because it was the resident that emailed me and said, you know, that it looks great, but we're missing from the building and engineering ordinance, IT, police department ordinance, IT, uh, and then emergency management. Okay?
Okay, I think we can pull that information.
I mean, they were on there from last year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Rick, you said you had something?
Are you at the salaries?
Well, we can go back to the salaries if you'd like.
So on the salaries, we had put, uh, Carrie, you almost had me say Karen.
You guys speak up, Rick.
Yeah. Uh, we, we had Carrie up to sixty thousand, and they kicked it back and wanna give her four percent. She is kind of my butt, uh...
Your deputy.
Deputy, yeah.
Office.
Correct. Yes.
Sometimes I think she's the director, right?
Yeah, me too.
So we have her at forty-eight thousand right now. She's making forty-six.
I've been making forty-six since I was hired.
How long ago is that?
Can you talk through the mic, please?
That was in twenty-one. I have not had a raise since twenty-one, when I entered the position.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna make any decisions, but I am definitely gonna put a star next to this. Uh, you know, you gotta keep in mind, I, I, I promise you, I don't think it's pick and choose. I think the administration is also just, they have tough decisions in front of them, you know? Uh, I'm not saying that, you know, it's okay to say, hey, you know, Carrie, we're gonna get you next time, next year, but look, uh, you know, it's, it's tough decisions. I mean, you're at forty-eight, three hundred. What's, what's an additional seventeen hundred, huh?
No, he's talking about sixty.
Sixty-eight, six, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to go to fifty. You wanted to go to sixty? Rick, what he's fun, Rick. Um, I mean, I see this is something that this council will make a decision on. I mean, we want to make sure that it's affordable and, and the, and look, I know the work that you do, Carrie. No joke.
She does more than the building department also.
Correct.
And consideration.
I know that there's multiple other departments within the city. Um, I can give you a list if you'd like to know.
Sure.
You have a list, you said?
I do.
What's this list?
Um, the additional support that I provide to the city outside of the building department.
Okay.
I assist the Chief of Staff and City Attorney at their request on multiple cell tower contracts and the Metro Act procedure. I've completed multiple necessary annual reports at the request of Wade Trim for the Water Billing Department Comptroller's Office, because they are not able to do them. I facilitated new and updated ordinances at the request of the City Attorney, coordinated with assessing on the proper labeling of cell towers within the city for better tracking purposes. Training multiple staff within the Water Billing Department as the Comptroller's Office and DPW are not able to do that. Guide Water Billing staff in correcting their errors, advise comptroller, deputy comptroller, and plant maran of general ledger errors, um, in the building department revenue and expenses.
Hold on, Carrie, one second. You provide assistance to plant maran, is that an end wage room?
There were...
Or services they charge us for?
There were GL issues that needed to be corrected that weren't caught in the revenue and expense accounts. Um, collaborate with IT to correct database setup errors in the inspectors' tablets. Initiate parcel cleanup within the building department for combined split parcels that has not been done for the last twenty years. That is necessary in order to move the department online. Organize BSNA's permit and inspection system to coordinate with the existing applications to move the department online. Revamp inspection times to make available for the online process. Create multiple online fillable forms to facilitate moving online. Advise Building Director, IT, Ordinance, and Chief of Staff some multiple times of potential software and data problems that will prevent the building department from moving online. Assist Ordinance and the Prosecutor in the Court for ordinance tickets. Advise Chief of Staff, Ordinance Director, and Building Department staff regarding proper attachment procedure. Assist HR Director through civil service process and TPOAM contract processes and procedures. Daily and/or weekly questions from staff outside of the building department about city procedures, processes, and information.
Question for you.
Yes.
You've done all this, almost in every single department? You've only been here since twenty-twenty-one?
No, I've been an office manager since twenty-twenty-one. I've been with the city since two thousand eleven.
Wow. You know what? I'm, I'm for seeing her at sixty thousand.
Council Chair, uh, I talked to Director Rotland. We wanna request actually, uh, a deputy director for that, for that department because of, you know, she does do management for, uh, the rest of the people in the office. So we wanted to actually request to, uh, change that position to a deputy director.
So you wanna give her more than sixty, you're saying?
Yes, as a deputy director, yes.
So, okay, let's just change the name and give her the money right now. Okay, you're, congratulations. You're the new deputy director. What's a deputy director make across the city?
We have to go through the process, obviously, and she knows.
How long is this process gonna take?
She, she would know best. She's, uh, on the civil service. You can go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, well then, I don't wanna go through this process. I think it's fair that we can apply for, but I think moving forward, I'd like to see her at sixty thousand.
Okay.
I'm for that, too.
So if we can make those adjustments, obviously, these things will still come before us. I'll add it to one of my notes.
And, and Council Chair, you're saying not, not move her to deputy director, just change her salary?
Eventually, the mayor can go through that process, but I think as the office manager where she states, I mean, you know, turning into a deputy director could make, potentially not even be her.
Council Chair?
You know, it could be somebody else.
Well, we can make her the interim deputy. She's, she can still go through the process. She can be the interim deputy director.
Okay.
She was in the process.
So you wanna give her the interim deputy position today?
Yeah, if you guys are okay with it.
Yeah, absolutely okay with it. Congratulations. What's, what does our deputy director make here in the city? Seventy-five?
Depends on who you ask.
It, I think you'd probably have to ask HR.
Is HR available today?
Well, here, I got the personnel sheets in front of me. I can tell you, other than the clerks, deputy is the only one.
They range from seventy thousand to the deputy comptroller makes, I believe...
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Yeah, with a five percent increase on the budget. So I think we're, I think to start off, Stacey, the interim, I'm gonna wait on the mayor, I think sixty's fine right now. Are you okay? Just, just until we up it?
Council Chair?
Yeah.
If you're gonna give her that summit, you should just make it in par with, uh, you just, you give, uh, was it, uh, was it deputy clerk? We just get the same salary.
Seventy-five, you want that?
Was it seventy? Seventy.
I think...
Okay, well, there you go. Why don't we just match it to whatever, uh, well, and you also gotta keep in mind, the, the deputy clerk hasn't, was the only one that didn't receive one, and I, and we spoke with our HR directors, she missed it. So, go ahead. Why don't we go do that? Why don't we match that for her? Man, what a good day. Put on your socks and shoes. Did you think of that today?
It's gonna be a seventy?
So, what is it at?
Seventy-three. Yeah.
I don't see why we don't accept it.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Somewhere, somehow, Rick's gonna call me tomorrow and say, I haven't gotten a raise in so long. Rick, and I want you to know something. You do great, but it's really, uh, Carrie is somebody that I, I lean on often when you're, you know, either off or you're out at a inspection and, and really, if you guys know something behind the scenes, Carrie is phenomenal. She's absolutely phenomenal. The city's blessed to have her. Really, thank you for, for giving everything to the open heights.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, continue on.
Okay. Um, moving on, I think we're at contractual services that went down from a hundred and twenty-five this year to twenty-five, and that is...
Well, there you go. Just find a way to repay you.
There you go. That is for moving, um, the engineering back in-house. Um...
So, so I have a question, I'm sorry.
Of course.
About, so the building department is, the engineering, the engineer's budget, does it come out of the building department or who handles the pay for the engineering department?
It comes out of the building and engineering. However, other funds allocate a stipend to the general fund, so water will pay for some of that, streets will pay for some of that, and it'll come as the allocation to the general fund. But the salary itself is housed out of the building and engineering department.
So if you go through pay loss, you know, it doesn't show it's coming out?
It will show that it's in building and engineering.
But it's not coming out of building and engineering?
Um, it is now. Yeah. So that must be a change that was very recent, because that, okay, that must've changed last month.
Then my other question is, is that any payments that are made out to engineers, so any, any services paid out by engineers, does that come out of the building department's account or does that come out of, uh...
It comes out of the project that it is related to. So if it's a water project, it'll come out of water. If it's a streets, it'll come out of streets.
So the engineering department never touches the building department's accounts?
The, and, it's building and engineering together.
I, I, I understand that. While you're saying projects, the building department doesn't have an account for projects?
Um, they will account for any general fund project, so like the sidewalk project, whatever engineering that has to do with that, any general fund engineering costs would be under that umbrella.
So why, why was the building department over?
Which one?
What line item?
Just in general, like, there, there's banditures and money coming out, because when we built the building, when we created the building, the engineering, uh, position, we said that was, uh, it's a department of its own, but I guess Mr. Deeb is not a director. He's an engineer.
Correct.
So...
So it's the building and engineering department.
Never building and engineer.
Right.
It's in the charter.
Building and maintenance.
No.
No, you have a separate building maintenance.
Building and, uh, what was it, building and engineering? When you signed me walking... Okay?
Okay.
No, no, I, I understand. I, the engineering is part of building. I'm not disputing that at all. What I'm saying is though, if anything is paid out, is it just paid out directly from the general fund of the building department?
It should be coming out of the building department, is it building and engineering?
No.
Yeah.
Council Chair, it depends on the project, um, because Mr. Deeb handles a lot of different things. Uh, there is a baseline salary that we apply directly to the building and engineering department. But then as Mr. Deeb goes around the city and he handles, manages projects, it is determined wh- what that project was and all costs associated with the project is then allocated to the expense lines for that specific project. So if it's sidewalks, for example, any costs incurred to do the work on those sidewalks goes against sidewalks. If it's, uh, Mr. Deeb is looking at that, um, that grant program for the meters and the lead, all of his costs associated with those projects will go against that fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Would that answer your question, Councilman?
Somewhat. But thank you, go ahead.
Okay. So moving along, we have building demos at three thousand dollars. Repair and maintenance, we talked a little bit about that, bumped it up to six thousand. Training is at two thousand. The sidewalk repair...
I'm sorry, I gotta stop you on training.
Oh, I'm sorry. Repair, sorry, motor fuel is six. Repairs and maintenance is two.
What, so training, does that include all licensing also or, and are recurrent on that? Is two thousand enough for that? No, so how are we supposed to, when do licenses expire?
So when we talked about it, we thought that twenty-five of September would have been the next license, but it is this year.
It's this year.
That's why we put, yeah, that's why we put everything in it this time, because we all have to do all of our classes.
So it's two thousand dollars enough for training?
Absolutely, that, that's...
What's the budget that you need for training? Because you can't work without your license being active.
Well, you, you have the four inspectors, so it's gotta be around nine or ten thousand dollars. What's the tool that we had in there?
And that's continuing education also, correct?
Yeah, we asked for fifteen.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
So how'd you guys come out with, with two thousand dollars from fifteen thousand?
The two thousand dollars was the previous year as their licenses weren't due, so we were just doing maintenance classes at that point, and the contract wasn't settled until the fall, so we didn't know what the next year was gonna hold.
So right now, all the licenses need to be renewed this year. So I'm, I'm, you said you requested fifteen thousand for the four inspectors?
Yes. But all along, you know, there, there was only one inspector, which was me, going through there. Now we have four.
Okay.
You need additional fifteen thousand?
Thirteen thousand.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and bump that up to fifteen thousand.
So...
But just so you know, that's only every three years, so...
I just want you to know, Michelle, Rick, just in this meeting, with everything we have just discussed, this budget goes up, building and engineering, seventy-two thousand seven hundred.
And we're not done yet.
You're being nice.
So, so for training, which is nine-six-two, that's gonna be bumped up to fifteen thousand?
Okay. So then we have your sidewalk repair and replacement, and that's just your sidewalk program. And then that's two hundred thousand. And then we have capital outlay, which is a hundred thousand, and the reason for that is that last year, you approved a hundred thousand for the scanning, and that has not taken place yet, so we added it this year.
We're transferring that money, we're not using, we didn't spend that money.
Correct. They've only spent not even a thousand dollars. Yes.
I have a question too. I know last year, if I, if I remember correctly, you were supposed to put, supposed to be digitalizing permits, pouring everything. I, I don't see nothing for IT here, unless I missed it. I don't see technology on here.
But I would tell you, Carrie, this is something that Councilman Mott has been stressing on, the Councilman, former Council Chair Abdullah.
You go ahead.
This is, this is, uh... Something that they have been requesting for a long, long time. Um, I, I will tell you, I know you guys are extremely busy. You just walked me through the list, but this should be priority, um, and, and we owe it to our residents. There's no reason why IT isn't on, on with this as well.
It's not right.
We are collaborating with IT to move it forward. Um, there are multiple software issues as well as other departments that we have to coordinate to get to that point. We have forms available online to make active, but there's still some details that need to be worked out to get to that.
Carrie, can, can you make this a priority for us?
Absolutely.
We, we, we are gonna prioritize you guys. We never ask for anything. You ask for something, you have the support of this body and this administration. We are asking you for something that has been asked for, for a really, really long time. Um, and, and it's like, I, I wanna say this as nice and as respectfully as possible, but it's, it's a slap in the face to, to the past council members and this current body. Uh, so please, I ask you to, uh, just prioritize on this one, really.
Yes.
Is the issue still about, uh, online payment? That's the issue?
Yes.
Because I, I did talk to the treasurer and she thought she's on board, so I, I guess just...
I don't know. That would be a good question with Cooper.
Councilman, um, I, I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Cooper, uh, the other day. He did agree with you that the treasurer was now in favor. Uh, and I know his plan is to move forward. He's standing right there. If you don't mind, he can step right up.
He's okay. He's about to speak, so we're, we're gonna drill him soon.
I have, I, I'm sorry, I have a few questions. So G.I.S., what do we, what are they, what are we paying on, is that the... So G I S, what do we, what are they, what are we paying them 70,000 dollars for? Isn't it to put like water main breaks or sewer repairs or?
That's to plan the utility lines within our system as well as the parcel lines and divisions for the properties within the building system.
Okay. Then my other question is, does the budget for moving online, does that come through building or is it through directly through IT?
We have some built into our capital overlay. There are projects that will be becoming for you, um, coming before you next month. There is some through IT as well. So we are working together to get that done as we know that is important.
So do you think by this coming year, we'd be having some services online?
Absolutely.
If they can fix our Zoom issue in less than a day, I think.
Just more convenient now with everything being online.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Councilor Chair. Is there any way for us to know how much revenue the building department brings in a year?
Yes. Um, if you, on page one, there are several line items that are related to the building and engineering.
Can you give us some quick math?
Oh, well, if you start at the building permits, uh, 477-000.
477, okay, building permits, that's one million.
So that's a million. And then you have some electrical permits, heating permits, plumbing, et cetera. Basically all the way down there. But the major thing is your building permits.
You think a million dollars, I, I feel like that's a little low.
It is, we are budgeting conservative, um, just because that's how it's trending this year. It probably will, given historical data, go up to about 1.1, 1.2.
Now we got a lot of new construction going on, we'll say that.
Okay.
We had projected for the 23, 24 year, um, for our revenue to come in at around 2.2 million.
I, I know we, we increased, uh, we did increase the inspection fees, uh, just by being a file, no more. Was it 50, was it 50 dollars or?
Yes.
We went up 50 dollars.
They went up 50 dollars.
So that's at least 25 percent right there.
The permit fees, electrical, plumbing and HVAC were also increased as well.
So you're saying you're expecting about 2.2 million?
Correct.
But we're budgeting, we're budgeting for one?
Well, she's budgeting just for one on the building and maintenance. If you add them all up, it comes out to.
If you add them all up, because you have building inspections of 400, rental property inspections of 450, building permits of a million. So all in all, 2.2.
So, Rick, I have a question for you, Director. If we're, uh, I know we do, is the rental, uh, reoccupancy programs at every two years or?
Every three.
Three, can we push it down to two?
They have to get ordinance.
If.
We would have to redo the ordinance? We would have to redo the ordinance? And I think it should be every time that it changes occupancy, like it used to be.
Okay.
I think, I think there's a lot that we need to do with our ordinance.
Yeah, especially on.
Isn't it that way now?
No.
But we are working on doing commercials also. We don't do commercial right now.
So every time there's a new tenant, you're saying you would go out there and get a C of O?
We do commercial inspections every time the property changes ownership or a new leasing tenant moves in. But those that are there for numerous years don't get re-inspected. We're working on changing that, upping that to possibly every three, every five years for safety processes and coordinating with fire.
Could you, could you make that ordinance free since, uh, you're the ordinance expert? I wrote everything down with the ordinance.
It's next on my list.
Next thing that should be on your list should be prioritizing going digital. We're, we're still stuck in there.
But the digital is a lot of money.
Rick.
You have no budget for it. You're already spending the money. I mean, that's, uh, there's more involved.
Okay, guys.
There's a lot of behind the scenes details I would be happy to fill you in on.
Carrie, we are better than any other community that uses digital. We should be at digital.
I agree.
We have Carrie, they don't.
But we should be online, there's no excuse, no matter how much it costs.
Okay, let's get over that on that one. You guys ready, Councilman? Councilman Sob?
Yep.
Councilman Constant?
Yes.
Councilwoman? Go on.
All right. Moving on to planning commission, this one is very easy. That's page 29.
Yep, page 29. Ready to go?
It's an 8,000 dollar budget. The only real increase there is in the commission fees. So that's increased from 2,000 to 2,500.
Is it because we're fully staffed or what happened there?
Expecting more projects, I hope.
So it's per meeting. And if there's more meetings, there's more costs. So that's really it.
All right.
Are we expecting more projects? I mean, there's more permits in, okay.
More than what we've already seen on Ford Road?
Yes. We have some major ones coming through within the next month or two.
Really? Well, I hope, uh.
I know of one.
I know of none, I want you to know. I know of none and I don't wanna know of any.
All right.
I don't know of any, nobody's told me anything, so I wouldn't know.
That's it for building and engineering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
Thank you.
Figure out where you're gonna start coming some fat on 75,000, huh? You got a lot of going on over here.
Thank you, Carrie, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Or Deputy Director.
Interim.
Interim Deputy Director.
Next is ordinance.
Everybody's favorite, what page are we on?
Page 24.
Four? Everybody's favorite department. Again, I, I just wanna run it to you one more time. This is another department that we haven't seen what the past was.
You haven't for any of them.
Yeah.
This year, so we'll just add it.
Is there a reason why we did that this year, why, why we changed it this year?
I didn't see the last year's, so, but that's the only reason.
Thank you.
Okay. Starting with salaries, um, the salary line reflects what's in the personnel budget. The budget amount does not include three additional ordinance officers and a deputy director, which were asked for by the department head.
So this, this includes, you said, or no?
It does not.
Okay, well, Council did request three positions. I'd like to see those.
I think the director would also like to see that as well. Having three officers. Uh, with no disrespect to the director, not saying, you know, it's necessary or not. But I think for a deputy director position right now, I think that's something we can probably hold off on. I think I'd rather see more vehicles, more of our ordinance officers, uh, in the streets, helping out during very tough times, especially since, uh, as the spring is starting right now, and I think this is what we were trying to avoid, where all the dandelions, all, all the blight that you're gonna see. And it's not really so much that the ordinance department, you can hold them accountable to. Uh, because I think Councilman Ahmad just said it, we were having lunch the other day and he said, "It's crazy, within an hour I had a dandelion on my lawn." And it's like, I went in, I showered, it came out and there was a dandelion. And knowing him, it's, he loves his grass like his hair. He, he wants to make sure that his grass is always looking nice and clean. And as soon as that one grew out, I think you took it out, you said, right? So, so I, I want you to know, Director, as important as a, uh, a deputy director position is, I think most importantly, we need to have more ordinance officers. Uh, but we can go ahead and continue.
Okay. So continuing on, we have part-time. And this note says if the full-time people are hired, then the part-time can be eliminated. So that was a concession that the department had decided that he could do. Overtime, 30,000. We're thinking that there's going to be more overtime if more people are not hired, so.
Well, I, you would think if there's more people.
That would go down.
You'd have no part, you'd have no part-time and no overtime. Uh, you'd be a lot, less of overtime.
Lot less.
A lot more people would be doing a lot more of their work. So we're actually saving money.
Correct, yes. Um, moving on to clothing, we have at 4,000. Uh, hospital insurance and life insurance, again, went up by the same percentage. General government pension is 105, fringe benefits at 38, supplies at 7,500, just a little bump up from last year. Dues and membership, 500. Uh, the animal pro, 55, um, that is based on a historical average. Uh, contractual services is 37,5. And what that is, is the lease payments of the vehicles plus, um, Belfour. Motor fuel is 30,000. Uh, repair and maintenance, 6,000, travel and education of two, training 3,500, and capital outlay is 83,000 because of the truck that was ordered but has not yet been received. So if it's received after 6:30, it will have to go on next year's budget.
Well, that was my question, uh, was about that truck. I know this is something we approved last year, I've yet to see it.
It has been ordered, if I'm correct.
Just a really brief update on the truck. It was, uh, the chassis was delivered to the, um, Upfitter, uh, Swab Manufacturing on Good Friday, actually.
Nice.
And I was, exactly, I was in contact with, uh, Fred from Swab Manufacturing, gathering all the parts to do the build. The projected delivery date is mid-June.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll have it by then, that's my hope.
So then we do expect, uh.
If you receive it in June, then we can have it in this pri, this year, 24's budget.
I just wanna make, I just wanna make it clear that if it gets to the following year's budget, we have to amend the budget so that we can take this money out, amend that budget, and, you know, we're transferring the money over.
Yes.
And I wanna make sure that we're following the, you know, the right way of doing it.
Yes, so it's currently in the budget for this year. If you receive it this year, you're all good.
Cause we already approved of it.
Exactly.
We have to amend the budget, add it to the budget. I don't wanna just say, oh, well, we approved it last year, we don't have to come back and amend the budget. No, because that's wrong. Charter says otherwise. Whatever we are adding, uh, for the, for the following year, cause we're budgeting always a year in advance. I wanna make sure that, that 85,000 is amending the budget, adding the 85,000 from the old budget, then approving it so that we're paying for it this year. So we'd have to come back in front of Council.
So you would like to take it out of next year's budget right now?
No. Cause if we get it this year, then you don't have to take it out. But if we do, if we get it, say, July 15, you have to amend the budget to add the 85,000.
Okay.
I don't wanna say, oh, you.
So don't include it in 25's, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. And we can absolutely do that.
And I only say that because that's how every process should be. Anytime we're going to spend money, you have to amend the budget. You can't just spend the money and say, well, you approved it two years ago, we didn't use the money, so we're just gonna use it now.
Okay, we'll take it out.
Thank you.
Of course.
And, and I say that with a big smile on my face.
Not a problem. If you want to, hopefully you'll get it in June and you won't have an issue at all.
Fingers crossed. I'm praying, and this is something that I fought for. I wanna make sure that, you know, protecting our, our dogs and animals and wildlife and making sure that they even have AC.
Okay.
So.
And then there's the capital outlay under 5,000, which is only 2,000 dollars. That's your minor things. Um, that's it for ordinance, so any questions?
So the three positions we requested isn't in this budget, right?
That is correct. At this current time, it is not.
Well, I'd like to budget for it because there was a request made by Council.
We can calculate that and put it as a note. One moment.
I mean, salary by itself would be 183,000, but you two, factoring, uh, the benefits and stuff. Right, but there's also a part-time position. You're talking between part-time and overtime, 85,000.
So three ordinance officers will be 133, 431. But then you can take out the 55,000 for part-time, correct?
So we can turn the part-time, can we hire somebody from part-time to full-time?
No, Charter doesn't allow until you amend, uh, the resolution, which I believe is, you would have to, it's a process. We tried to do it once.
Councilor Chair. You, may I speak?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, uh, you cannot hire the, the part-time to full-time. Uh, you'd have to establish a list, I think we already have one for full-time.
Yes.
Ordinance. We'd have to hire from that list.
That's why Charter's so outdated.
That's the, I, I've already thought ahead and I've, because the grass, as you guys are, men and women are aware, grass is growing, I've already hired one part-time person. Already have a second person, um, in the process, the onboarding process, part-time, to be hired strictly for grass. Spoke to, uh, Councilman Sob before about this concept, just to try to stay ahead because they've already been writing grass violations. And if this is a third week, I knew grass was gonna grow quick this year because of the weather. So I wanted to try to stay ahead of it, so that's where I'm at right now.
If grass is gonna grow quick this week because of the weather, like, that's gonna happen. But when the grass is becoming two feet, three feet, four feet tall, like, on Hassan Beach Daily around the corner.
It's insane.
It's, it's like, I go, I drive to the city hall every week and I see the same lawn. And it's like, I'm about to take my lawnmower over there. Uh, but just keep that in the back of your mind. Hassan Beach Daily, been like this for the last two years.
And then my other question is to the Director, so these three new positions we're gonna, we're creating, do they have vehicles? Or do you have enough vehicles?
No. I, currently I have two, um, vehicles. Well, I have one right now because I have the part-timer using the one vehicle. Uh, but I do have two vehicles technically. Uh, we might free up one, once the new truck comes in, we can use both trucks, which I prefer not to do because they're not very fuel efficient. And then we can maybe find another fleet vehicle somewhere, I, I don't know.
Fuel efficient, I, I, I get it. But it's still cheaper to use that truck than to say, you know, we're not gonna do it. Cause look, let's adjust the elephant in the room. There's so many complaints and we're gonna, you, you see, I mean, there are times where I don't even mention it to you.
Right.
Where people are reaching out to me and I'm saying, you know, these men and women are working day in and day out. Like, I, I can only imagine, it's coming to me, if I'm getting 10 a week, you're at least receiving 100 a week.
For sure. The battle has started. You're aware.
I don't even know where to start.
Right.
But I, I, I think, I think for a good start, and I'm not trying to, you know, micromanage, start on, start with our businesses. Because you go up and down Ford Road, I think I've, I've brought this up to Mr. Bunker. I was walking the other day, me and my wife, my son, and I don't know why we were walking on Ford Road, but we ended up on Hassan, made a ride on beach, took it to Ford. And everywhere I stepped, uh, uh, on the Heights Plaza was trash. And I'm sure it's the debris that people throw out their window and whatnot, but it's, it's there. It's there. It, it was terrible. So just some food for thought.
Councilor Chair? Councilman Constant?
Briefly, Director, if you had a deputy, what, what would you have a deputy do? But, you know, how would that free up time or would it not free up? What would be the argument briefly for a deputy?
Would help me with, uh, personnel issues, would allow me to go on vacation. Not that that's a, a, an important thing in everybody else's mind, but, um, there are lots of things they could assist me with. A lot of times I, I, um, help out the office staff because if you're getting overwhelmed with calls, I try to help with that. There's emails, um, they could take internal complaints if we have them, um, just like the standard deputy would do.
Thank you.
I know it's costly and, and not necessarily at the top of the, the list, and I understand that completely. Completely. There's a lot of requests for staff, so I, I understand.
Thank you.
Um, I, I just wanna ask you one last time. I know when we, Councilmen, uh, once we're brought up having those three positions, I believe you were saying that they weren't necessary. Are you saying that right now with the staff that you have, you can maintain the entire city?
This year is, is, I wanna say it's unique, not unique, but different because I'm actually onboarding a second person to assist with the grass. True, it's gonna try to get a third part-time person. This is our busiest time of the year. So this is when.
Well, it is necessary for these three people.
Yes, I mean, especially this time of year. Could I, could I do without three full-time people right now? I think so. If I can onboard these.
Would we see better, better services and less. Would we see better, better services and less blight if we had three more people in the city?
I, I would venture to say yes, I mean, it makes sense, right? If there's more peo- right?
Yeah.
I don't think anybody would disagree with that, but it's, if there's-
Just do it.
Council chair, well, one of the ordinance, one of the ordinance officers will be directed towards rental, neglect of rentals, just like they have somebody at part-time running off for grass and unblight. Uh, so-
Even when I used to knock on doors in some neighborhoods, I was so afraid.
Right, well, I'm sorry, Councilman Saab, what was your question?
So I, when we passed the resolution, Councilman Winsell's resolution for the three positions, one was for inspections of rental properties and maintenance on, on blight and ordinance be enforced. So it's more of a, of a ticketing issue, but it's also, you know, taking care of the neighborhoods too, making neighborhoods safer.
Absolutely.
So, so the part-time positions are, are part-time positions. You, you, you want this year round, you got cars being parked in front of homes, I mean, I see some pictures on Facebook of houses, the mo- houses demolished from the inside, gutted out and just thrown in front of the yards. It's not acceptable.
Right. I agree.
It's a clean city, and like, I, I, I reached out to you today, there's a mattress laying in the middle of a street, and their garbage day is not for two days. You know?
Yes.
It's not, that's something that we should have in our ordinance officers every single day in the city, to go around and, and electronically ticket people.
Somebody's wife must have kicked her husband out of the house.
No, no, it's just they're, they bought the house as a mattress and a bunch of cabinets just laying there, it's just, it's not acceptable.
The, the, the process is a little different. Not saying you can't do that, but when you get the court, they like to see that they've been warned, that they've had an opportunity to fix it, uh, before you go to that. I, I'm not opposed to it, you're, you're asking the wrong guy, because I love, I, I'm all about that.
What do we have to do for ordinance?
One of the things I can't stand is, is when people put trash between the curb and the sidewalk. I hate it. I'm going to tell you right now, the, the mayor, before when we started having all these issues, we were hitting them for, we were hitting, giving them tickets immediately, and then they were getting a bill for the, the removal of the, of the debris, so they were getting, and that's why-
Our ordinance clearly states that, you know, trash cannot be put out until the day, the day before the trash day, after four P.M.
Correct.
Or three P.M. They've had this garbage out since Friday.
Right.
And I'll tell you another thing, Director, and I, I know this isn't the time and place, because time is limited and we have other departments to go through, but I will tell you, the one phone call that I'm starting to receive, our neighbor's saying, and I don't know how to, how to resolve this, but, hey, I can't do this anymore, my neighbor's got a lawn in their backyard, it's so high, there's rodents, they don't do any spring cleaning, they stole the leaves, there's all this trash, look, how can people live like that? I have no idea, but it's affecting your neighbor. Now, the neighbor's then calling us, and we reach out to you guys, and it's like, well, we can't do it unless we can go by the house, and they have to give us permission to go in the backyard, and you go in the backyard, you speak with them, then you're like, well, we gave them a warning, we have to wait two weeks, but within those two weeks, you have somebody, you know, at this point you have so many rodents that have been mutated, and there's so many more, there's just so much going on. How do we fix this issue? Like, where does that, like, where do I tell the resident, or what do you advise me to say to the resident that says, hey, the weed is higher than my, my six-foot white fence that I'm not supposed to see, but I'm seeing weeds growing above it? What do I say to that resident?
The, the easiest solution for a grass issue, because a lot of times, most of the time, a rodent issue comes with the tall grass, I would make the recommendation that you have them call the department, have us go out there, cite them for the tall grass, because generally you can see it from the front yard, and you can write a violation for it. We give them seven days, on the eighth day, the contractor will come and cut the grass. If they cut the front, that's great, if they don't cut the back, we're going to go in the back, contractor will go in the back and cut the grass.
That eight days is too much, it's got to be three. It shouldn't even be eight days, it should be, you know what?
Well, you have to, that's an ordinance issue, you'd have to change your ordinance. And I, I don't disagree with you, and there's some municipalities that write misdemeanors for misdemeanor charges for having tall grass.
How much is our current contractor, um, for long cutting, the city cuts it out?
You just approve them.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's cheap, it's, uh, forty bucks plus administrative, you know, depending on the lot size.
How much is our administrative fees?
Uh, fifteen percent, I believe, so-
Can we change it?
The average is-
That's, that's for a whole other time.
And then my, my other question is that, you know, technology-wise, I know there's other cities around us that use drones when they can't access backyards, um, to take photographs.
We have that, we have that.
Not the ordinance.
No, not ordinance, the-
No, no, they use, that's B.S.N.A., that's outdated, that's like live, if he goes out to a house and they can't get in, you can fly a drone.
That is a, that is a question for Roger, quite honestly, there's a lot of, Director Vanderplow, I think, has more knowledge base with respect to that. There's all kinds of legal obstacles you have to overcome. I don't disagree with you, I'm with you a hundred percent, I, I would love to do whatever we possibly can, I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying we have to, we have to figure out a way to do that lawfully, and respecting residents' rights.
No, there's no privacy, a hundred percent.
Anything else?
That is it, thank you so much. That was, what page we just finished, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Yes.
And the three positions were added to it, right?
I have a note for that.
Okay, one thirty-three, one thirty-one, right?
Correct. Do you want me to subtract the overtime and part-time?
No, he has the three part-times.
Well, if you're hiring three more people, definitely, we don't need the overtime.
You have to be hired first.
You got to wait for them to deliver your stuff.
Okay, so we'll just take, we'll just add the three and the note, okay.
Can, can we get a number two for the, all the longevity stuff, insurance, everything, all the, whatever it needs?
I can come up with something. Well, the vehicles, I think that we decided we're not going to-
We're just going to use the actual, the old truck also.
Okay, we're going to page eighteen?
Page eighteen is I.T. This should be pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So, for salaries, you have the director's salary, and then there's part-time for techs to assist it with I.T. Then there's hospital insurance that is going to increase slight amount, same with life insurance, general government pension of fifty-three thousand, the I.T. services line of four hundred. Everything that is currently there is, you know, ongoing, but also there is a hundred thousand in there for MyTel phone upgrades, and twenty-nine thousand for Entra P. one, which I can let Cooper explain what that is, since I'm a numbers person.
So that's, that's, you actually just approved that for this current, uh, end of the third year contract, year? That caught, that charge is for, to continue into the next year, because it's going to be at the end of the next budget cycle where that fee would come up again. That is, if you remember, the last meeting you approved, um, the Microsoft three sixty-five upgrades, that was part of that.
That's MyTel phone?
No. No, My, MyTel is our phone systems, and then the Microsoft Entra P. one.
Microsoft, we just approved the last meeting.
Correct, correct. This is to make sure it's improved in the next, the next budget.
I got a question.
Sure.
Again, in this email that we received here, well-written from this resident, um, one of the things that they insist on, uh, one last ask guys, because I agree when I have mentioned that. Can we please, please, please get I.T., uh, I.T. director a staff? As someone who works in technology, it's beyond puzzling, who, we expect one person to service thousands of devices and hundreds of employees. I know we can just snap one finger and make a staff of a dozen people appear, but you can work with him to find that one, at least couple of key roles he would need to be hired.
I like this person.
You know what? I used to think I liked this person.
So, I, I can actually speak to that, so, um, that, that part-time person, I, I will admit, I'm getting a little worn out servicing, the numbers that the person said is a little high, we're roughly four hundred staff, about four hundred, maybe like three-fifty of our, of our devices are endpoints, as I call them. With, with everything I'm doing, that's where that part-time person would be able to come in so they can handle some of the lower-level stuff for me, um, where it's simply of, hey, go and help fix a, fix a printer, not a printer, but a, but a phone being disconnected right now, um, computer's not booting up correctly, where they can go through and potentially even re-image that right there. The higher level, um, stuff, I have my, my network engineering to assist me with that, and our overall cybersecurity, um, that's actually included in the I.T. services, that that contract that we currently have going on with B.A. Networks with it, I could have them come onsite and help do some smaller things, but they're a lot more expensive than me hiring, even just a part-time person.
Well, let's, we can discuss, maybe you could bring something to us, propose something to us, I don't know, we don't need to add it, but you can always amend the budget.
That, that part-time right now, that fit, that, that's there, that's, that's already in this, so I can go through. I will admit, in the last budget cycle, you kind of see it, it was actually there, I was being, um, budget-conscious, but also I, I wanted a, a full-time person, so I was kind of trying to hold off, trying to wait to try to get one, understand the situation that the city is in, so now I, I went into this budget cycle asking, saying, hey, can we keep that part-time? You say yes, we're going to be able to keep that part-time, I'm going to be going out and trying to hire a part-time person to assist the city.
I will, I will respond to this person and say, we can bring you several, but we can potentially bring you a half.
That, that will, that will be, trust me, that's going to be of, of value to the city.
Um, my only thing is, and I'm going to be honest with you, our part-time, or even our I.T., there is no office here. So like, I know you can work remotely, and you can access our things, and that's just how technology is, but to me, or, I, I would, you know, fifty-one thousand, five hundred in part-time, I, I would like to see somebody knowing that they're here. Uh, so that's my biggest concern. If you could tell me that the part-time that works here, part-time is going to work here part-time, I'm okay with it, but to say that somebody's going to work part-time, is going to be at home, and they're going to come in at, based on when we call them, but we're still going to pay them fifty-one-five.
It's, it's a part-time, it is a part-time salary, understanding that. Um, also got to remember, we, the, for as an office, technically, I actually have an office here and at the Justice Center, there would be more hours at the Justice Center, and this would be a person that I would, um, potentially deploy to different parts of the city, where they go to different buildings, depending on the situation, saying, hey, we got this little, we, we got these tickets that came in, you need to be at the Justice Center for this day, or this whole bunch of tickets came in, we're trying to tackle issues at the City Hall.
And so I'm okay, and I get that.
Yep.
But there should still be a designated, I think within City Hall, there should still be a designated place where it says they can reach out to this, you know, I.T. person, or, you know, I-
We have a ticket system at any time, that they can, they can, they have my cellphone, they have, I have the desktop phone, and I, and I have my ticket system.
Can we find them an office space somewhere in City Hall that told them our question?
There, there is one, I have one here.
Okay, where at?
Right here. Accessors office, right across.
Right, yeah, it's a, it's, it's a small office, but it, it does the job.
Any windows?
Uh, there is a, one tall skinny window in there.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, so like, if somebody wants to say, hey, I want to go see the I.T. director, go.
I, I'm more than happy to give you a tour, you'll do us three sixteen, you'll see it all.
I'm okay, I'm okay. Um, I just, I don't remember, though, requesting or, or budgeting last year for a part-time position, but if we did, we did.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm, I'm for keeping it, I'm in support of it.
Council chair.
Councilman Constance.
But, so that would be someone contracted out, or that would just be some retired?
No, no, this would, this would be someone out, again, hire part-time, you know, and those, those guidelines of keeping them as a part-time, which is, I think, twenty-nine hours, you know, a, a week a max at that, uh, with it. Um, I don't want to have any contract, I actually already have that contracted service, that's B.A. Networks, but again, they're designated for the higher level, network security, cybersecurity there for me, this would be someone that, um, would handle a little bit more of the, the day-to-day operations to assist them.
I'm just wondering how you would, who you would get, you get somewhat older person retired, that would-
Hey, I'll say in my, my prior job, this was a college student that I hired, some that was, that was, this is a learning experience for them.
My, my son graduated from U of M, started Facebook, oh my gosh, this, this was in California, but yeah.
Yep. Now, this, again, this is not a high-level, uh, position, you know, so, I don't want to say that's why the salary's low, but this is, um, this, they're not handling my network security, or my network engineering or anything like that for me, that's, that's, they're not a sysadmin, that's me.
So is one of them going to help me log in so that I don't have to keep connecting to guests, connecting to guests? I don't feel like I'm a guest.
You're, you're not a guest, I actually just spoke to the other councilman, I just need your laptop so I can actually reboot it. What you approved last week is going to help me with all of that, so thank you.
Welcome, see, we've never said no to you.
So Director-
All I ask, all I ask, is figure out how do you get our billing department to go digital? I'm not asking, if you can fix our, our Zoom that everybody was complaining about, and you did it in like-
Especially Vince.
In like two days, not even. Let us go, let, let us feel like the, the wheels are moving, let us feel the traction, that you can at least come to us and say in a week or two, guys, I've done one, two, and three, guys, expect this, you know? I don't want to come back one year later with that kind of budget.
We, we are, we are moving forward. Kerry, I think, set up a basis, saying there's a lot of background stuff that, that we are working on, because a lot of it is cross-departmental, um, and it's, it's a combination of what we want to try to be able to do with B.S.N.A. online, and also with the Civic Plus platform to get the online-
We are the best city, uh, in the globe.
And I'm, I, and many people are busting their butts to, to make sure that's-
The two things that are really, really hindering us from being like the greatest, not the best, but the greatest, is what's happening with, uh, our, our, our billing and maintenance and not going digital, and just some of the blight issues. So let's just fix those two things, everything's going to be great.
And I, and I agree, I'm going to say, the, the issue with what we need to take care of with the department going online, it's, it's a, it's time, got to, got to think of all the, the thousands and thousands and thousands of documents, this isn't just, let me just shove a, a piece of paper and scan it in there, this is, um, what's already been scanned and what needs to be scanned. It is, it's more time than anything, I'm going to say that.
But we are, we are working towards it one hundred and ten percent.
Like, we're going to, but we're going to put it in fifth gear, we're, because we're in like two gears, like, second gear right now. We want to, we want to move to fifth, that's all I'm asking, thank you.
Is, is it going to happen this year?
We, we are, we had, literally just me and Kerry had another conversation about it last week, about, you know, some of the steps to go through, because we, we hit some roadblocks, and what we can do to overcome those roadblocks.
So going back to the four hundred thousand, so that's, uh, I see here in explanation, one twenty-nine plus a hundred plus twenty-nine, is there anything else included?
So everything but the hundred and twenty-nine is ongoing services, so that Civic Plus, your B.A.E. Networks, copier leases across the entire city.
So these are separate from the four hundred thousand?
That's included in the four hundred thousand, so the hundred and twenty-nine is for the upgrade and the new Microsoft. The two hundred and seventy is for B.A.E. Networks, Civic Plus, your copier leases throughout the city, and various other services.
And keep in mind, this is, that's cross-departmental, you know, the other year when I first started with the city, every department kind of did their own, we've all tried to, so we could We've all tried to, so we could actually truly track it, we consolidated it all into my department, so I can, to help manage it for the, all the other departments, we leave that off of them.
So once we, uh, once we upgrade to Mitel, is that gonna affect, uh, other stuff, like the AT&amp;T and the Verizon, all the stuff that we have?
So the, the Mitel, you know, upgrades I'm looking at are, are old, uh, our phone system. When it was installed, I think it was like, it was two thousand seventeen, um, that was like a transition year of a lot of VoIP technology. Voice over internet protocol. And some of the things that were done here were not one hundred percent completed. I'm, I'm asking this so we, we can complete them, a, a, a great example are, are just to be able to replace some of our desktop phones. You know, for, for, um, a lot of them are failing, we, we, we picked phones that were actually already at end of life.
So who do we use for the desktop phones right now?
They're Mitel phones, so this part of that is, well, I'm truly taking, um, virtualizing our phone servers. And also doing some replacement of some phones throughout the.
And that's through every department, right?
Correct, correct, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we can continue on.
Okay, um, so now we're at operating supplies, just a thousand dollars, that's based on historical spending. Lease payment, that is for one vehicle, um, was not spent this year, so we're just budgeting. An increase because obviously lease payments have gone up, and, um, we did not use it last year.
How come? You don't have a car right now?
I didn't use it because all the quotes that I had gotten with the seven thousand wouldn't have covered it. So I'm, that's why I asked for the increase, so I could try to be able to cover it. And I'll say, uh, with the councilwoman, what I've been looking at the past couple of months, they are coming down. So, you know, I, I do believe that eighty-four hundred will be able to cover the, the lease, I'm not, I'm not looking for a giant truck or anything like that, but I do go, I or. My part-time person, uh, will be bounced without the city. And there are times that I do have to come into the city off-hours, uh, to help support, I've, there's been times I've, I've come into the police station or anything. For Saturday at eleven o'clock, cuz there's an, there's an issue or something, so.
So you're saying you need a vehicle for, like to take home vehicle?
That, that is what I'm, what I am requesting, yes.
Yeah, because if IT goes down on the police department.
I've, I've gotta come in, there are, there are were times, especially when I first started with the city, there were times that I had to come into the city to help support the services. We had a, a, a snowstorm and DPW phones come down, I gotta drive into the city during a snowstorm, and, and make sure that they're up and running for our residents. So, and that happened this past March, um, of two thousand twenty-three, when we had that big ice storm. You know, I had to drive into the city to, to support them.
And how much are you, how much are you requesting right now?
Eighty-four hundred.
Eighty, eighty-four hundred?
Okay, I see right there. And we initially budgeted, uh.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand, and you're saying that eighty-four hundred is gonna cover it?
I, I'm with the, the price seasons that I see come down, and actually I'm hoping where, uh, if this budget good proves, I could potentially use that seven thousand to help. Uh, lower the lease payment for the remainder of, of it.
Okay. Okay, I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Moving along to telecommunications, that two hundred thousand, that includes services for the entire city. So that's your Comcast, Windstream, AT&amp;T, FirstNet, Verizon, Xfinity. They're all existing contracts, that's nothing new.
Okay.
Uh, motor fuel is bumped. Is that the next one? That one was bumped down slightly.
Now he's gonna be taking a car home, so we should potentially bump it back up.
So currently, there's only been fifty dollars used the entire year, we're thinking at worst right now, five hundred. So probably thirteen hundred would cover it.
Okay.
Um, and then we have repair and maintenance of equipment, it's, um, additional, when does it, when the desktop phones do break. That's repair and maintenance of those, uh, batteries.
Replacing some of them, do you still think you need a budget of that high?
The, that fifty thousand for the repair, that's not necessary for, for just phones, it's for, um, sometimes some equipment in here breaks down, uh, we gotta be able to fix them. That's kind of like the, the emergency funds right there to be able to, um, replace computers, monitors, equipment that potentially do, that do break.
Honestly, I think, I feel like it's, it's a little high, you know, you've, you've, you've only used seventy-five hundred.
I, I, so I typically try not to use that until towards the end of the budget cycle, so that that money will carry over into the, not carry over. But potential equipment can go into the year.
In twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, you only use twenty-eight thousand, eight fifty-six. All I'm saying is. You're projected to use thirty-five, you only use seventy-five, you've spent in the past historically under thirty, why don't we just keep it at thirty-five?
Well, I, I will say my, the capital outlay was taken, is not taken away, but it's not there this year. You know, for to be able to help cover some, offset some of that cost, so. That was, that was part of that. I'd rather have that, that special reserve money in case something breaks throughout the city, I had, definitely have the funds to help.
Again, it's a fluted, it's a fluted budget.
I, I, I get it.
It's like, we're, we're giving a lot, I'm asking just to give a little bit back. So I'd like to actually see that at thirty-five, and if you have to end up using it, we can amend it and bring it back. That's, is that fair?
It is.
And we're not going down much, I mean, look, the money's still there, you've only used, and the year's almost over. I mean, July, June is almost.
You're gonna see me the next couple of meetings.
Alright, so let's, let's, let's bring that down to thirty-five, and if he needs it, he can, we can always budget amend that, please. Seeing that, you know, historically, we've only used under thirty, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-six, you've only used seventy-five hundred. You've projected to use thirty-five thousand, let's keep it at thirty-five thousand. I know they took away the outlay, I, 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 I see that, if you need to come back for an additional fifteen, there's nothing wrong with that, but. Given that we're bringing on a part-time, we're, we're, uh, you know, we're getting over, we're, we're giving more on the lease, all I'm asking is just give and take a little.
I one hundred percent agree.
Thank you.
Counselor. So, but that wouldn't be, if you get a new drum for a copier or something like that, that is under supplies, that's.
That's act, that would be under our IT services, cuz that's in the, the lease contracts with our.
Yeah, they wanna be, they wanna be repair and maintenance, this would be like.
That's why I said, it's not necessarily printers or anything like that, cuz we, I have lease contracts for all that, it's more of our, our desktops, you know, projector, screens, that kind of stuff.
Maybe the mayor can send out an email at everybody and say, hey, we're lowering our budget on repair and maintenance, take care of your stuff.
People know me as a hawk, I think.
Don't spill your coffee cup on your laptop.
Don't drink by your computer.
Don't drink by it. It happened to be ones.
Make those stickers with the supply money.
Okay, I think that's about it, right?
Yep, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you've got a good budget coming.
Okay, the next is cable.
Page thirty?
Thirty. Page thirty, yeah. Okay, so starting off, first line is the salaries line item. And that's based on the personnel budget. The second line is part-time, as you see, that was decreased this year because they were moved to the public information department. So part of the salary was moved to that.
I kind of feel like I wish we would have kept it, cuz you can use PEG funds to be able to do that.
PEG funds would be for equipment, so.
But if you have somebody working in, in, I, I know you guys are nodding your head, there's, there's, I know we're going back and forth, me and, me and councilman, former councilman Musket had a lot of back and forth on this. And I showed him a lot of different articles, support that you can use it.
Please, please share those, because I did extensive research, trying to find those and what the legal opinions were, were for those.
We'll share them with you.
Please, please do.
Because then we can use PEG funds there, and I'd rather use that than using tax, even though it's technically taxed, but it's money that we're getting back.
Yep, yep.
And as I mentioned last time, that they could be used, PEG funds, it doesn't matter what department it's in, as long as it's an eligible expenditure. So even if it was in the cable versus public information, whatever's eligible, no matter what department it's in.
Okay.
Next line item is the comp fees of a thousand. Next one, hospital insurance and life insurance, again, slight bump there, general government pension, fifteen thousand. Fringe benefits of sixty-nine hundred, supplies of five hundred, dues and memberships of five hundred as well. The newsletter expense has been moved to the public information. Then we have repair and maintenance of, um, cameras, et cetera, of a thousand. And then we have the PEG capital improvement estimated at five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
We have a big project coming up?
That is the project that has been in works, um, it has not been done the last three years, so.
I don't know what project it says.
We're actually, we've actually been in conversations with the architect about building a brand-new studio. We had that one that was at Berwin, that was considered Studio A, this is Studio B, we're looking at, on a full renovation of a Studio A. Where it would be a studio and an office for.
IT?
No, not for me, for, I'm, I help support, you know, Angela and the cable station now.
Is that still at Berwin, or?
What's that?
Is that still at Berwin?
It is not, not at Berwin.
So where do you wanna do it now?
So.
Justice Center?
At the Justice Center, yep. There's, we've, we've chosen a location, um, that has a public access.
Is the council gonna be, ever be informed, or see any rendering or anything of the nature?
We're actually waiting for, we're waiting for those, those renderings right now from the architect.
So is that the police station side, or is it the court side?
The police station side is actually the, the corner of like where the, next to the Home Depot, that corner, because there's actually a door for the public and come and, come and enter that way. Just for the, and also it actually includes one of the, uh, the garage doors, so that larger equipment that potentially would need to come in and out, um, for the studio could go through that door.
Why can't we do one here?
We do, we have one here.
No, why can't we?
This, this is, this is our Studio B for the, for our, for our council meetings and everything, the Studio A is, is, um. Kind of replacement of the very old and outdated one that was at Berwin.
So, but why are we moving it?
Well, there's a lot of space.
Exactly, what would we be using it for that we couldn't use this for?
So, um, we, we also do like, um, sit-down interviews and stuff too. So right now, what we've been using for the sit-down interviews is that corner over there with the two chairs. So we would like to have like a full set, and that's the whole plan with, um, having this new studio built, is having a full set and being able to. Right now, we're kind of limited because we can't have more than three guests because of the small space there. And also, we're limited to, um, the availability of the studio here, because sometimes there's meetings held during the day. So we would like to be able to have the flexibility to run our own scheduling with our own studio, and have all of the, um. Right now, we're using our field cameras when we bring it over here, so we're going to have, um, high-tech cameras that are actually going to be studio cameras. And then we'll be able to run, um, high-def interviews over there, so that's, that's the plan.
My, my only thing is, uh, if you knew the history of Dearborn Heights, the Palapco show, it used to be aired on. And, uh, it was a former marriage as well, that just so happened, and when I was in high school, or, I was in high school, I, I got on the show at the Berwin Center. And like, I got on stage, I got on with Lori Squire, with, uh, we were part of Key Club Juana's and Students Against Destructive Decisions. And it was amazing, it was such a great experience, uh, to see that we're gonna be going away, I don't know, I'm just a person that's just. Seeing change happening when we're already there. Ultimately, I'm not the decision-maker until it gets brought in front of us, but I just, I want you to know, I kind of feel a little different about that.
I agree.
Me too.
So I just want you to keep in mind, um, I mean, I'm all for the studio upgrade and everything, but I don't see it should be leaving the Berwin Center, I think it's also something that. The people in the neighborhood also look forward to it as well, seniors, there's just some food for thought for something that you should really consider.
So you mean, you, you just don't wanna see it in a new location, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, um, so we'd be, we would be running all of the same, well, not the same programming, we'd hope to like expand our programming too. But, um, everything that's in the Berwin Center right now is super old, like falling apart. And the space is another thing too, so it's, it's pretty small, and it's pretty cramped, so we're hoping to kind of upgrade and be able to expand a little bit more. And be able to do more with it, and, uh, that's the reason that we decided to go to the Justice Center is because we, we visited a lot of different buildings. And we need something with a high enough ceiling, and so that garage has the high enough ceiling to be able to do the, um, the studio lighting, cuz we've gotta hang a grid. And then we also have to hang lights from that as well. So even something like this, you can see the lights are like in the ceiling, we've gotta hang a grid, and then we have to hang studio lights, so we lose quite a bit of distance there. And so that's where, that's why we ultimately ended up over at the Justice Centers, because we, we found a place that had a high enough ceiling to be able to accommodate that.
How big of a place is it at the Justice Center?
Dimensions?
I couldn't tell you off the top.
Is it bigger than the old ordinance office here in City Hall?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Don't we have, don't we have, uh, space here at City Hall that can be used or utilized?
No, there is. This, this, this building is pretty, is pretty cramped, you know, as is. Again, we're, we're, we were looking at trying to do a good, fresh, a, a fresh install and start, you know, with this, with this studio, with the direction.
I think the councilman has something.
You know, I have a question, I, when they were redoing this room, I thought that they would do something to make these mobile. Where you could move them out of the way, and this could be the stage where you could do more, larger interviews. You have the audience already. Why wasn't that factored in while we were doing this? Cuz I mean, you could push this flat against that wall, it gives you plenty of room for people to sit and larger interview space.
So, um, we're not necessarily looking to have like an audience for it, it's more so the actual set pieces. So we could, yeah, we, we had talked about the option of making those be able to move out of the way, and, um. We would have other set pieces though, so like, for example, if we wanna have a set where we have a couch, where would we store the couch in the meantime when we were here, so.
Places in City Hall that had, the ordinance offices vacant.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I, you have something to say, Eric?
Yeah, just very quickly. You can only put uses that are law enforcement purposes in the Justice Center, that's part of the condition of the bond. Tiff owns the building.
So it looks like we might be having to either find something in City Hall.
Or go back to Berwin.
Or go back to Berwin. We, we'll, I'll, we'll definitely review that, that is, unfortunately, that's the first time I, I have heard that, so, but we'll go take that and we'll go back and discuss.
Or even look into it, just, that's all.
Yeah, we're gonna look into it.
There you go.
Thank you.
And again, I, I don't, I don't want you to think we don't want one, I just. I just want us to be able to, you know, betterize, cross our Ts, check out all options. You know, and I want it to be a place that's accessible to everybody.
Yep.
Including the council. Thank you. And the public. Alright. So, I, I mean, obviously the five seventy-five, we're all, we're all in support of budgeting for, this is something we wanted to do. I think we said we were gonna do this when we did this, uh, building, so we were supposed to start off at the studio, and, uh.
I gotta pause you too, you mentioned something about higher-grade cameras. Why don't we have them in here? I thought we were supposed to do a high-grade camera when we redid this just recently.
I'm sorry, I was referring to something that's higher tech than our field cameras that we have now, we just got brand-new field cameras, and they're beautiful, they're amazing. But, um, actual studio cameras are a different kind of beast, so that's what we would be putting in the new studio.
I'm just surprised they didn't put them in here as an alternative, you know, you can have those cameras, but put them on in here too, if you need them for other purposes.
Right, yeah, there's, there, there's so many different kinds of cameras that are out there, so. These wall-mounted cameras are the best fit for the, the most, the most use that they would be for here, which are the council meetings and, um, the other municipal meetings that we would hold here. But for studio cameras to actually be able to have them on the floor and physically be able to move them around, so you can do all different kinds of camera moves. That's what we would be looking into getting for those.
Thank you.
How much money do we have in the PEG constal?
There is about one point two million dollars.
I'm sorry?
There is about one point two million dollars as of the last audit.
So this is before we, we budgeted the five seventy-five, correct?
That is not, yes, that's before the five seventy-five.
Alright, excellent, any more question from council members? Okay, thank you very much, Angela.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cooper, thank you very much, we move on to the next one.
Next one is the police, page twenty.
Want to say something?
Yes. If I'm, if I may, counsel.
Sure, please go ahead.
Uh, council chair Baydune, uh, directed that I show up today with respect to this, to make sure there's not going to end up being a, a problem. I just have a few hopefully brief remarks.
Please go ahead.
The effect of the stipulated order for preliminary injunction is to maintain the status quo. As it relates to the budget, the, um, quote from the order is, the plaintiff shall remain in the employ of the city of Dearborn Heights without any loss of compensation. Term, condition, location, or privilege of employment. What is stated, as I understand it, in the current salary, uh, was never approved by the city council for the one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the chief. And the one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for each of the directors. Actually, your last approval, I believe, was a hundred and four, uh, two, uh, sixteen for the chief and ninety for the directors. However, in the complaint, there were exhibits that were employment agreements, uh, for the chief and the two directors. So to avoid any possible violation of the stipulated order for preliminary injunction. You should not change the salaries of the chief and the two directors. Unless and until the stipulated order for preliminary injunction is set aside. However, there should be language, um, included in the budget reflecting this contingency. And I have spoken to Lori Stewart, who represents the city with respect to this matter. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, council, yeah, council chair, I believe this is what we had discussed previously.
Okay.
And, uh, so I just indicated that the effect of the preliminary injunction is to maintain the status quo. That, uh, the, uh, chief and the two directors are to remain in the employ without any loss of compensation and so forth. What is stated in the current, for the current salaries was not approved by the council. However, in the complaint, the exhibits, uh, there are exhibits where there were their employment agreements. And the amounts that are reflected in there to make sure there's no possible violation of the injunction. Should be maintained until that potentially. of the injunction should be maintained until that potentially ends up being, uh, set aside, if it is. And, uh, there needs to be some language showing this contingency. I've spoken to Lori Stewart, who's the attorney for the city from MMRMA about this. And I hope to have her input regarding any language regarding this, uh, contingency, which will be provided in the future. But, uh, you shouldn't be discussing any sort of changes with respect to their compensation to make sure that there's not gonna be any sort of problem or potential problem. And, uh, council chair, I don't know if you want me to say something a little more generally that you and I have discussed.
Yes, please do.
Okay. Um, just in general, my advice would be to insist that there is a line item for every salary covered by the budget. It is, uh, do not just have a general line item for any salaries for any department. The mayor is supposed to fix salaries up to and not to exceed line items for any salary. If you list salaries in general and do not break them down by position, you run the risk that the salaries will be set at any amount up to the general line item amount. Um, also, the budget resolution should include clear language that salaries are not to exceed amounts, uh, reflected in the budget. And salaries are to be paid on a proportional basis throughout the fiscal year. Uh, so, you don't have someone, you know, getting paid like, twice as much and then saying, "Oh, well, now we need to do this." And I can provide language to that effect, but I wanted you to be aware of this more generally. And I know, uh, council chair, you and I have discussed this.
Yeah.
Um, but, while I was discussing the other matter which we had discussed, um, I wanted to, uh, uh, make sure I pointed that out too. I don't know if you need me to stay around any longer at this point, or if...
If we need any type of language, that, that would be great.
Yeah. So, should I stay for the moment?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Chief, thank you, welcome back.
Thank you.
We missed you.
Thanks for the warm welcome, Gary. Good work done in a memorandum, we're gonna start the budget here.
Microphone, please.
I think your microphone. I'm trying to be as optimistic as possible with you, chief, thank you.
I understand, but I also feel that the way that that was just opened up was very unprofessional. It could've been done in memorandum to city council. And that way, there would've been no issues for clarification. But, I hope we can get through this and...
I think we're gonna be fine today.
...see what we can do about answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Michelle, you start us off. Do you have any questions you wanna speak on it? You're more than welcome.
I do, right off the bat, before you start. Why isn't there no line items? Like, you know, highlighted or it breaks it down to...
We're on page twenty-six.
Twenty, twenty.
No highlighted items, no breakdowns, nothing.
So, the reason why there wasn't is because there wasn't anything significant other than the salaries that was a additional. So, we tried to highlight only the things that were significant jumps or decreases. Um, the salaries line item, if we wanted to start there, there are several vacant positions, obviously, in the PD. Um, we did budget for seven of the vacant patrol positions to be filled. And, as a response to that, we took the overtime down by 500,000.
Assuming that you filled those seven vacancies.
Assuming they're, yeah, exactly.
But, so, we took it down, assuming that we, that we feel pretty confident?
That, that is what was requested by administration, yes, to...
I mean, I would love that. That's, that's a, that's a plus.
Yes.
How your more officers take down overtime, city's more in control, I love that.
That's the goal.
Great.
Um, then, of course, you have retirees that had just retired and they have the three-year payout, that's the next, uh, line. Um, there's the crossing guards at 75,000.
For how many crossing guards?
I do not know, actually.
Can we get a little breakdown on that?
We can get a breakdown on who's charged there.
Thank you. Chief, can we get some of those?
Do you have? Oh, go ahead.
Director Vanderplow has the number.
Right now, crossing guards are fifteen.
Okay.
And our goal is to go to twenty based on the requests we've had for service.
Part-time is at 360, just a slight bump up from last year. Overtime, as I mentioned, we had it 1.5, decreased to 1 million, provided the seven positions are filled. Then, we have clothing at 155. Hospital insurance at 1.37 million. Um, holiday pay is at 294,000.
Hospital, wait. You said how much for hospital, you're off.
Oh, am I off? No. Hospital insurance...
Hospital insurance, we're showing 1.368.
1.33, yep.
You said 1.7.
1.37, sorry.
Okay.
I just rounded later.
Well, that was the requested budget, the recommended budget is different, so...
The, the recommended is still 1.37 rounded, 1368, yes.
All right.
No, it's okay. Um, holiday pay is at 294,000. Life insurance at 27. General government pension is at 275 and 345 pension is at 3.368 million. Um, the fringe benefits is just FICA, again. Supplies at 60,000. Ammunition targets at 50. Utilities, one...
Can we go back up?
Sure.
To supplies?
Yes.
We're at 60,000. We used 66,000.
Yeah. The numbers did go up slightly after we did the original pass.
Why are we, why are we, uh, under budgeting?
So, that is a three-year average that we used for sixty. Um, we could bump it up.
I'd like to see that at least at sixty-five.
Yeah, we can do that.
If that's, I mean, if that's okay with the body.
What, what category, council chair?
Supplies.
Supplies.
Okay, we can continue.
Okay. Utilities, we're looking at 190. Um, prisoners, we have at 12. Dues and memberships, uh, we have 5,000, again, based on the average. Um, contractual services, we have at 400. The major expenses there this year, why it's at six is the body cam, um...
Yep.
And cameras, yes. And so, then, there's also some fees that are paid for your Clemis subscription and that sort of thing. Uh, tuition reimbursement at 15,000. The special service at 2,500. Telephones, 15,000. Motor fuel at 180. Repair and maintenance of equipment is at 320. Training is at 50,000. And then, Act 302 training, which is specifically that you get financed from an Act 302 funding source.
Yep.
That's 22,000 there. And then, we do not have any capital outlay included in the budget.
Why is that?
There is a long list of requests, um, but none of the capital outlay in general was included.
Chief, is this something that you are okay with, denying zero dollars in capital outlay?
No, sir, I'm not.
So, what do you need?
Uh, our list of capital outlay projects for this budget year, um, we have a twenty-year roof that's beyond life. Um, we wanna resurface the parking lots. If you look out into the parking lots, we have, uh, a lot of structural issues with the current asphalt that's down. Um, looking at parking lot LED upgrade, that's been done, has it not?
Yes.
Okay. Um, rooftop unit replacement for, um...
One unit.
For one unit. And then, the compressor replacement, these are major, uh, projects that there has not been any type of a schedule for. And that also, um, just within the last 24 hours?
Forty-eight, give or take.
Forty-eight hours, uh, boiler replacement. So, we're looking at some significant...
How much is, sorry, chief, how much is the rooftop unit?
250,000.
Rough order in...
Is that for the, is that, what side of the Justice Center is that for?
Well, they all need to be replaced, sir. Um, but the one that, RTU one, I believe, is the one that's gone right now, they're repacking the motor, that will need to be replaced, but they all are at end of life. So, rough order in magnitude for one, at least get one done this fiscal year.
Which one needs the compressor?
I think RTU one.
So, it's the same one that needs to be replaced?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the, what's the replacement on that?
250,000.
Rough order in magnitude, 250 prior to obtaining official bids.
What about a, what about a boiler?
The, so, the boilers have gone bad. Um, there, we actually have active leaking right now in the basement. Um, I have, I just spoke to DPW today, they're gathering bids as we speak. And I hear a rough order in magnitude at that is like, roughly 125, but waiting for bids.
Hang on, and we're still, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still waiting for, we only got one bid on the generator?
Did you, which?
One. For the transfer switch?
The transfer switch, only one, we've put out the bid multiple times and only one vendor has come back willing to do it.
Why don't you just bring it to us?
We only have one bid.
I mean, if we've put it out several times and you can show that, we're not gonna stop it from changing.
Yeah.
I was trying to meet your requirements, sir.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, that's why I'm having a conversation with the chief on it.
We'll, we'll put it forward.
There you go.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge right now to get companies to bid, there's not a lot of vendors that, um, again, that is the original generator as far as we're, uh, aware of.
My, my question is, um, so, this compressor, uh, that's 250,000.
No.
No, I know, I'm, I'm going back to the compressor. Do we have a, a quick price on what the compressor would run the city?
The AC compressor replacement is 15,000.
I mean, I think...
Rough estimate.
I mean, I would like to at least minimal say, we can knock off at least one or two of these. Um, uh, and if, the AC compressor, hang on, councilman, if, I mean, the asphalt's probably gonna be pretty expensive, maybe we can, uh, resurface it. I don't think you can do a full grade, but, I mean, I know resurfacing probably wouldn't be as expensive.
There's, there's other options that are available as far as heating up. I don't know, because of the age of the asphalt, if heating it up and trying to meld it back together is an option, that's not my specialty, but we'll look for, for all the options that we can.
Yeah, why don't we get a couple of quotes? I got a friend that does strictly asphalt, I'll have him, not saying he's gonna bid on it, but I'll make sure that he at least goes by and he can take a look at it.
And it sounds like we're pretty close to a statement of work for bidding, you know, to look at pricing on that as well.
Okay. And is the, is the bidding opened up to the public or is there restrictions on it?
No, there's, everyone can bid.
All right, chief, I'm sorry about the rooftop unit, the compressor, is the, like, the, is the fur, uh, the, the heat side of it bad also or just AC?
I believe it's just the AC side of it, is it? No, you're thinking it's both. Again, this kinda is not our specialty, I've, I've leaned on Director Vanderplow for the facilities piece. Um, it's much like all of you are trying to do throughout this process, trying to, um, get our city up to speed on things that have been neglected in the past. So, we are reaching out to, um, the folks in the building department, Mr. Dib and others, to help us sort through that, that process and what our needs are.
I mean, is there grants that we can also go out for on, on some of these things?
Director Vanderplow is looking for them, I know he's been very successful in getting some MMRMA grants in the past. So, we'll do everything within our powers, um, to find a, a funding stream for that.
Council chair?
Uh, councilman, council.
Dumb question, but either Michelle or the chief, so, how much does the court, i-if there's a new unit put on the roof, how much does, is the court share if it's, uh, budgeted that way?
Do you have an answer?
The court's revenue goes into the general fund bucket, so, really, it's all the general fund. So, what the chief was saying is that about 23% of, I believe, the building, right, would be court.
Okay.
And then, the rest would be the PD.
Thank you.
Council chair? Sir, we do cost sharing and, uh, expense sharing with them on almost every charge.
But, this should be, uh, bought in to us before this budget, because it says he's out, it's out.
And these are things that we've been working on for quite some time.
So, right now, we're saying that, you know, the compressor on the AC is out at 15,000. You're about to see a heat, heat wave this summer, why don't we roll in the 15,000, get the, go out for bids, get the compressor fixed up and put that as a, uh, capital outlay. Mayor, what do you think?
We should've known sooner before this budget.
Well, I mean, or, okay, or you can bring it before us.
That's what I'm saying.
So, um, like, today, we were without air conditioning all day, I don't think we had any air moving throughout the police side of the building today.
So, like, what happened to the courts?
Something that we need to, what we need to look at is, there's a company that is in our building almost daily, if not multiple times a week.
They're getting out of trouble?
And we're just, they're just getting, they're band-aiding, right, the system, they're trying to, to keep this moving. So, that's why we would, um, like to move this forward, and we have obligations, obviously, with our prisoners, uh, not only just the visitors and the customers. So, um, again, it's a very frustrating, you know, problem to have to deal with right now. Um, but, we will bring forward these initiatives with solid numbers for you. And even if we only, we get one bid, we're just gonna move forward with them at, at that time.
Well, I don't wanna see everything with just one bid, but I mean, if you could say that...
But if we do, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, if you're saying, I think for heating and cooling, I think you'll see an astronomical one wanting to come to the Justice Center and service us. Uh, but if you're saying you went out for something and you put it out there three different times and nobody bid it on but one company, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna tie your hands, like, it needs to be done, it needs to be done, bring it in front of us.
Okay.
Is it, council chair, is it still Johnson Controls that services the heating and cooling?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna mention their name, but yes, their vans might as well be given a spot in the back lot. It's very frustrating, right? Because we're paying them to come out. And what does that look like as far as a service contract? And I don't know if they're doing the whole city, I've been told in the past, different information, that the Justice Center has a different company that does it than the rest of the city. Seems like there'd be an economy of scale if one company, you know, we would go out to bid for the whole city. That seems to be very prudent.
Ray Musket was very critical of the Johnson Controls service.
Yeah. And I, I don't wanna badmouth someone, it's just an observation, but I rolled in today.
Bring it in front of us for the next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we don't wanna see, uh, you know, the Justice Center without an air conditioner while it's 90 degrees out. I mean, I don't wish that upon anybody.
Yeah.
Or, or even prisoners, like you stated. Uh, so, we have to do our part. And then, I guess we can leave the capital out at zero dollars. Because we're gonna try to fix it before June.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I mean, as far as doing, like, the roof and the asphalt, I think, uh, you know, see if we can just kinda repair it, just to get us by.
What's going on with the roof?
Council chair? Believe the roof is original, 20-year lifespan, we're on year 21. We passed useful life about four years ago. We've had a couple different experts come out, at least just give us a rough order in magnitude and then, it's at end of life. We've had a couple different experts come out, at least just give us a rough order of magnitude, and then it's at end of life.
So we do experience, um, leaks throughout the building from time to time. Um, we've, I don't know if this is boiler-related or not, but in the property room, we had some leaks that had to be addressed. Um, that was just plumbing, okay. So there are some issues that, you know, we are experiencing with the roof.
All right, any other questions? On to woman. All right, on to the next. Oh.
Oh, sorry.
No, actually, um, we're not done. This was.
Well, we're going on to the next fund, I think, right?
Do you have any other questions on this page?
I do. I just wanted to know why we reduced our patrol officers and why we requested for thirteen dispatch went down to eight.
We did not ask for a reduction in eight to eight dispatchers. We currently have, I believe, eight and we have two more in the queue that you can answer.
So what we included in the budget is filled positions or likely to be filled positions in the very near future. Um, based on the history, the dispatchers, after talking to HR, they've been around eight for the last few years. So we did not include that in the budget. If more are hired, absolutely, we will include them.
Why did we go down on police officers or are we hiring more police officers or are we not?
So.
So I assume you put in the number that we have right now?
The number you've got right now, plus seven.
Plus seven. We have four police officers that tomorrow, the list should be certified with Act Seventy-eight Commissioners. Um, so we're looking forward to bring them on. Um, and we're always out recruiting, uh, to bring our numbers up for police officers.
Then another thing about fuel, why don't we have a filling state, a filling tank at the department? Why are we always going out to stations?
I, I believe that we used to have a tank at the DPW that I've been told about that's inoperable or not in ideal condition. That's normally where police departments will, uh, go and refuel. So that's something that's beyond my scope. I don't know, that's a question for the DPW director. But ideally, that would be a great system to have.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that it's out of the police department's budget. Why can't you folks have one on site at the police department?
There's, there's environmental issues, I know that, um.
An above-ground tank, not underground.
Yep, and we have one of those for the diesel tank, uh, in the back. And we're constantly having to fill out environmental issues, so I don't know what that would look like. That's beyond a police chief's, uh, scope, but if you'd like to, we'll be happy to look into it.
I'd be interested in getting it because, I mean, the fuel would be much cheaper to have it in house.
And I have to agree to that. Um, when the police department was over behind here, they had their own pump there, where they filled up the cars before they took off, cause I grew up in this neighborhood. I used to watch them fill up the cars in the parking lot for years.
If we had one, we'd use it. We're, we'll look into absolutely.
I'm just surprised they built the Justice Center and left that out. If there was a reason, there, I can't think of it, because that's a little spot and they had it in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, so we'll, we'll definitely look into that and the challenges for that.
And then the FOIA coordinator, is that a civil service position or is this a civilian position?
That is a, well, it's both. It's a civilian, uh, who went through the civil service process.
Is that approved by council?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. I know that we used to have a, um, lieutenant that was in charge of it. Um, and now that, uh, when he retired, we reimagined that position and posted it civil service. Uh, much like you did earlier today, you put a interim director in place, deputy director, and then, um, assuming she will then apply for the job through the civil service, the same thing was done through FOIA. When our lieutenant abruptly resigned, uh, we put a subject matter expert in there.
But the FOIA coordinator has never come before us?
No, I think we are working within our full-time employees' numbers.
So just bring that FOIA coordinator before the council.
So the emergency manager also never came in front of council?
Emergency manager was a position already, councilman.
It was a part-time position.
I said that, I agree. Should've been brought on to amend the budget, uh, and I brought that up to the mayor. I think you said you're gonna bring it to this next meeting, right?
On January sixteenth, I received, uh, an email from the mayor saying that he would include a full-time manager, a full-time emergency manager and an assistant emergency manager, overtime council, uh, with overtime and several city employees to assist, having overnight emergencies. The problem I'm having is if, if you break down the number with, uh, emergency managements, and a resident here looked it up too. The nightly pay is insane. It's like a hundred and ninety-five or a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour.
What are you talking about?
The emergency manager, part-time, comes out, uh, based on the note line, if you're, so it'd come up per night, break it down and, oh, it's one eighty-five an hour. How was that calculated?
We haven't gotten to the emergency management, that's the next topic.
Yeah, but it's on here. It's on the police page.
But we can break it down to the next, uh, next topic under number nine.
Any other questions?
Um, Ms. Lewis, do you mind updating the, this budget to whatever salaries were afforded by council last year as the current salary? Cause whatever, I mean, whatever is here, some of them there not, has never been afforded by council.
Right, and we don't see the budget, uh, the salaries of last year.
Well, I asked her for all of those. That's for all departments.
All departments.
All the personnel pages should have.
We can do that.
IT, uh, mayor's office.
And the ones that we talked about last week as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Every personnel sheet should show what they made and what we're asking for.
Thank you. Yes.
At the same time, this one's saying current salary is something that was never approved and they're getting paid that much. So this is need to be adjusted too.
It seems like.
I can only speak to it's actually in pay velocity, so.
If, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the police, the police department budget is currently over budget, right?
Who are you asking your question to?
Uh, Michelle.
Um, yes, yes.
And, and why? If we're short officers or staff, why are we over budgeted?
So a lot of it is overtime because you're short officers.
And how many officers are we currently short?
That's a great question. I can ask the chief, he probably knows that answer.
So we're constantly looking at, um, reevaluating duties, responsibilities when we have a sworn police officer that is doing a function that they should be out doing police work with. Let's say someone driving our cars around. And we now, we now have a mechanic that was a transfer from DPW. Uh, if you look at our, um, line item twenty-four is our.
What's the numbers on it?
Rep and maintenance equipment.
Okay.
Look at the significant reduction that we saw there, and we have a, a fleet that's being, uh, more well-taken care of and redeploying a police officer. So we're working with the organizational assessment folks to make sure that we have the proper, uh, persons and the proper role and titles that are doing jobs. For instance, our detectives, we used to have six sergeants, uh, within the detective bureau, and we're down to two. And we're pulling administrative duties away from them and putting them in their proper role within the records section. So there, this is a process. It's a long-term process. And what hasn't been mentioned yet is we negotiated four contracts last year that also impact our budget. Uh, the command officers, the dispatch, patrol, and then the clerks and mechanics.
I believe those, those contracts will expire this coming year. Well, my question was, how many officers are we short?
Uh, that's the million-dollar question, because we're still in the process of looking at the police numbers and determining who needs to be where. Because as we redeploy officers or people retire, those positions, if they can be civilianized, they're, they, they've been civilianized. It's the responsible thing to do with the taxpayers' dollars.
But then we're taking the taxpayer dollars in overtime, remember working with officers? So my question again is, I ask this again, sorry, chief, is how many officers are we down?
For what, in what context? Cause you just brought up overtime, cause I will, I will argue.
I'm, I'm, I'm for overtime, but all I'm saying is how many officers is the department currently down?
We'd like to see about twelve, we would like to see about twelve police officers. And I think it was in November or December, I sent a futuristic org chart to city council in an email to share what the vision of the police department was.
I think you did.
Yeah. So if we were to add about twelve more police officers to our ranks to fulfill that vision, we feel that we would have a very, uh, efficient and responsible police department, uh, that the, the citizens' tax dollars are going to properly run. But I do wanna finish this point, because we've had significant increases, long overdue for our staff. And I appreciate your support on that, very much so. You said you wanted it and we made it happen. I've had many meetings with the comptroller's office to try to find the way to right-size these contracts. So I might even argue, although I might be a little premature, is the number of overtime hours may be less. We, we couldn't get an answer on that today, because we don't have the right technology in place to get that answer.
Yeah, but chief, I want you to keep in mind, we are over on this budget by at least twenty-five percent.
We are about seven point six-nine percent if you take things out of our control, out of that budget. So if you look at hospital insurance, right, I, I can't control the hospital insurance. You can help me in the sense of, we did great things in the officer's contract, where they have to work less overtime to provide for their families. And I think in the long run, this is really long-term vision, is when you have a healthier workforce, hopefully those insurance premiums will drop when you have healthier retirees, right? That this is things that we will probably never realize, uh, in our careers. So, but it's a long-term situation. And I feel that we've really, as far as officer wellness, we have really done with your help, uh, uh, come a long way to help them out, um, to not be at work so much for the overtime. I'd love to snap my fingers and have twelve people. There's, we have people that are, are leaving for other professions. I talked to another chief the other day, a guy started a rental business. He's making forty thousand dollars a month. He's been a cop for like fifteen years. He just quit, right? And those things are out of our control.
So how many current officers do we have employed today?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Standby, I'm trying to digest the numbers.
All right.
Okay, we have total sworn of sixty-two with thirty-eight in patrol and fifteen in command.
Thank you.
Councilman, are your questions answered?
No, sorry. And you said we have twelve in line?
He said he'd only have twelve.
No, I'm so, I'm so sorry.
We have four, hopefully, that have, will be.
Strike that, strike that. Uh, you have seven in the process of going in front of Act Seventy-eight, you said?
Four.
Four?
Four tomorrow. We hope to have a list that's been certified. And we're doing our best to work with HR. We've recaptured a lot of responsibilities there, um, where Director Swope and other staff members are communicating with Act Seventy-eight and try to get through that process, um, as quickly as we can to onboard staff.
Okay, and then a few more questions, sorry, about the telephones, uh, uh, here under eight, um, eight fifty-three dot zero zero zero. Isn't, uh, when I asked, uh, Director Cooper here a minute ago, oh, that we, the telephone, the Mitel Services, that would include all departments, right? So that budget was for every department in the city, correct?
I can't remember the exchange.
He said that five hundred it was, or, yeah, the four or five hundred thousand that they had budgeted for.
Cover the police and everybody.
Okay, we, we do, um, as Director Vanderplow just reminded me, we have some nine-one-one. We need some pots, plain old telephone services, the copper, that we need, but we're trying to get rid of them. We're doing our best to get rid of them.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The, the ser, the cost for the phones for the plain old telephone service coming into the building, the copper wires, we're switching over to, um, voice-over protocol.
Protocol.
So that could be included in there. Um, that's probably more of a question for him. Um, but does that include our cellular phones? Okay.
Yeah, I think the budget he put, um, included the Mitel Service as a package for the whole city, to update the whole city's phone systems.
Yeah, I don't know, no, we're good.
If you're looking for Coopers, I believe it was twenty-four right in the shop. Or is it eighteen?
Yeah, it was under a coach.
It's eighteen.
That's the issue, is that for the whole city or is that?
Mitel was, yeah. That's all.
What's the total amount?
Four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think it would cover that. Mitel is four hundred thousand.
So this is AT&amp;T for those.
Right.
POTS lines that are charged to the department. They're currently being charged to the police department. We could move those out and increase, but as they said, they're trying to get rid of it, so maybe the first quarter. So maybe we just remove the majority of that.
Yeah, okay, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
What do you, what do you want removed, you said?
Telephones, fifteen thousand.
We'll double-check with Cooper just to make sure, but I can make a note of that.
And then, uh, for utilities, we just had all LED lighting, everything done at the department and Justice Center, don't we?
Yes.
Why did utilities go up?
Counselor Chair.
Please.
Utilities is also, is obviously water, um, lighting. We've not realized lighting, uh, increases or decreases yet. That still has to be factored in. One of the problems was when this went in, it was not properly coordinated with DTE. Therefore, they were not able to give us our, um, new rate. They're actually, we've spoken to them multiple times, trying to recalculate that. But unfortunately, when that service went in, it was not properly coordinated with them. So therefore, we still have an adjustment on that. They should go down. I, we're gonna do the calculation to see by how much.
I think our ninety thousand is steep.
Again, that's a, I believe that's a three-year average, correct, Michelle?
Yes.
Three years on one hundred ninety thousand. Would be about right, even if, what were you gonna say, take it down to one fifty? Even though forty thousand isn't gonna make that big of a difference.
Budget's over, trying to balance the budget. I'd like to see that at one fifty. There, if you deduct everything, maybe we can put in a new rooftop unit, find that money.
Well, you know what? Even in the past, you saw it around one twenty-six. You can even go down to one thirty if you wanted.
If you're okay with it, go down to one thirty.
Twenty-six, this is through, uh, March thirty-first, council. Well, even if you look at twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
One twenty-two.
Huh?
One twenty-two. I mean, I think it'd be cheaper than one twenty-two with, if you got LED lighting now throughout.
I mean, we can go to one fifty.
Okay.
I see the, uh, she just said no.
I mean, water always goes up, uh, the electric rates are going up. Well, I believe if you're putting, uh, LED, remember when DT came to speak to us, we were gonna save like, it was an astronomical amount of money. But again, it's a fluid document. If you needed to go back up, we can go back up. If you need to go down, we can go down.
And then for, uh, nine thirty-two.
Repair and maintenance.
Maintenance. I think the chief a few minutes ago said that actually went down. It seems like we guys are requesting quite a bit.
Our, uh, activity through two twenty-nine was one thirty-one and our budget is two eighty-seven. I don't know what the projection, how that's being projected on the, uh, rep and maintenance equipment.
Actually, it's one forty-six, chief, with the projection of two eighty by the end of this fiscal year.
And we're budgeting three twenty.
And we said we're cutting on maintenance and repairs.
So the three twenty is based on the trend that it's been going up about forty thousand dollars a year, so.
We hired a mechanic and verbatim from the chief's, uh, own statement that we're cutting down on costs in repairs and maintenance. And we've upgraded our food quite a, quite a bit.
Counselor Chair. It's not only the vehicles, but it's also the building. It's other things within, that have been, not been serviced on a regular basis. Um, this doesn't even take into account the jail that I can't even find a vendor to fix. I need rough order of magnitude seventy-five thousand, eighty thousand in the jail. Um, my problem is I can't even get the vendor up to do that, but we know it's going to have to be done. So a lot of these things, yes, we've, uh, lowered, uh, based on the use of our auto mechanic, but unfortunately, the building is still requiring of multiple repairs that have not been conducted.
What's the jail need?
Uh, prior to you coming on council, I had sent some pictures in. Um, I'll try to locate them. There is window sills that are rusted, uh, out in the jail cell through the plexiglass. Um, it is, um, just a complete disaster back there. And even though people have been accused of violating the law, we still have a, a obligation, obviously, to keep them safe. And, um, we had a lot of leaks in the ceiling, some water damage, uh, just issues that we're trying to clean up.
But wouldn't that fall under the overlay, the capital overlay?
I don't believe so, no.
So to answer your question again, I can't even get a vendor out here to give me an estimate. So I didn't even put in capital outlay until I get a rough order of magnitude that I feel comfortable with. But even outside the jail, just other various issues that we're having to fix and, and Band-Aid until we get some of the longer-term things done on the capital outlay. All these things are obviously, as you know, going into a building interrelate with each other.
We've already used one hundred and forty-six thousand. We have about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars remaining. You believe that something, Chief, that.
It would be a hundred and thirty-four thousand remaining. You're looking at this year's, this coming year's budget.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right.
A hundred and forty-four thousand.
Hold on, I'm seeing through three thirty-one, two thousand, twenty twenty-four is a hundred and forty-six thousand, one ninety. Subtract that from three twenty.
Three twenty is this coming year. It's two eighty-seven.
I'm sorry, okay.
This year, yeah. So, yeah, so I, you have about one forty-one left.
What would you like to see, Councilman? Now I was just subtracting the numbers.
About one thirty-six.
That's the projection, that it'll go up about one thirty-six in this current year.
It's got around two ninety. I think that's comfortable.
I'll make a note.
Thirty thousand, but it ends up again, they need, what I'm trying to do is, we're trying to cut the budget and see that if eventually, whatever we're saving, all the departments combined them to get something that they actually need.
Are you ready to?
Well, sorry, Counselor Chair, if I may.
Yes, Councilman, please.
Repair and maintenance of equipment would then include the jail? Or that would be a capital outlet, that wouldn't be in that category?
No, but it's, again, it's just, it's part of, you know, if it's broke, you try to fix it. You know, we have a lot of plumbing issues. So it's, it's a systemic thing. I wish I could sit here and tell you it's exactly this. Why I didn't put it in the capital outlay is I don't feel comfortable even on a rough order of magnitude to give you anything on the jail. It's so specialized. There's literally one company who services it. So, and they're out of Ohio, and I'm sorry, they're down in the Buckeye State, but that's what we're stuck with. So the idea, sir, is, sorry, the idea is, the things that we've seen break over the past year and we've Band-Aid and we've done pretty good job of taking care of some of that, we know we still have a little bit more to go to at least get us to a highly serviceable thing or highly serviceable system, and then we could start really laying into the capital outlay like the Counselor Chair said.
Are you done here, Councilman?
Yeah.
Are you guys all set?
What's the total, Michelle, you got?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You got a total of the reductions?
Uh, let's see, there was a ten thousand reduction, forty, so fifty.
We went up five thousand.
Went up five thousand.
We went down forty thousand.
It went up five thousand, went down fifteen for the telephones, right? So that's a ten thousand dollar reduction. Went down forty for the fuel. So that's fifty, and then went down thirty, so a negative eighty. Good? Okay. Yes, eighty, sorry.
Chief, can you get a, put a bid out for the parking lot for an overlay and a seal? An overlay, not a full replacement, just an overlay of the damaged area and seal it? Thank you.
Okay, now page forty-five, and that's your federal forfeiture fund?
You can proceed, Michelle.
Okay, so this one, the first section on page forty-five is your revenues. And as you know, you cannot predict what you're going to get in federal forfeiture revenue, so you just make your best guess based on historical numbers. So we're predicting in total about four hundred and three thousand. And twenty-two, twenty-three, you're gonna say, why, why are you decreasing it so much? It's because there was a significant amount of activity in twenty-two, twenty-three that is highly unusual. So we're projecting about four thirty this current year. And then we projected four oh three for the next year's budget. Again, if it goes higher, that's great. If it goes lower, it's, it just is what it is.
Yes, Council.
So, Michelle, when you say significant activity, I, I didn't catch what you meant.
Me either.
Counselor Chair. So significant activity, we had a culmination of a case that came up that was several, I wanna say years, but let's say thirty-six, forty-eight months, give or take, came to finalize all that, and I think in total, we took in like one point two almost overnight. And we wouldn't normally see that was off of, I'm sorry, I can't talk about it yet. I can give it to you in closed session what it is, but it was off a, a case that one of our TFOs was on. And we don't normally see that as a general rule. I agree with the estimates that Michelle came up with. I think that's reasonable based on what we've seen and what we think we'll see in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if there are no other questions with revenues, we'll move on to expenditures on the following page. And that's page forty-six, and we are predicting for expenditures to be in line with the last, the trend of the last three years. So about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for federal forfeiture spending. Well, you might spend more, go ahead.
Counselor Chair. We are trying to solve, I'm sorry. We are trying to solve some of the budget gap with these, with this funding to spend it on appropriate items that can make up that gap and the variance of what our funding is and what our spending is on the next year. Obviously, that's not a sustainable model, but it can cover some one-time cost on some things we have to do. We will obviously have a spend plan for you when those things come up. We will explain to you what it will offset.
Okay, thank you.
And, I'm sorry, if I can't.
Please, go ahead, Councilman.
The trend is, at least in the state, to make much, much less subject to forfeiture.
That's correct, sir.
Several bills in the state legislature.
A lot of, a lot of this, sir, is, is actually federal, within the federal promulgations of forfeiture. On the state side, we actually are starting to look at, that's a nominal amount anymore, for that very reason, sir.
Okay, and I'm sure as those purchases come up, they will be brought to council. The reason why they're not in the budget is because of the federal grant rules on, for expenditures in federal forfeitures. You're not supposed to supplement your budget with forfeiture funds, it's just to supplant it. So when things come up that you can use federal forfeiture money for, go ahead and budget it at that time. Exactly.
We got it.
Yep. Of course, yes. So the next, if there's no more questions on forfeitures.
I have a question, I just, down on the itemized list, when you get down the way, isn't our.
What page are you looking at?
Forty-seven.
We're not there yet, we just finished forty-six.
We'll move to forty-seven next.
I think I have the same question right now, well, go ahead. We'll let her go, let her start.
No, go ahead, start.
Okay, so forty-seven, there's one line item there. It's the body cams that we're budgeting for this year in forfeiture funds because that is where it was originally approved to come out of. So we're going to pay for that with forfeiture funds this year.
I thought we already purchased our body cam.
It's a five-year agreement.
Okay. Counselor Chair.
Yes.
I actually, it's on my desk right now, I'm just waiting for our executive assistant to get back so we, so we process it properly. I have a memo for your notification with the resolution you signed in twenty-two. We can pay this entire line off with this year within federal forfeiture to get this off our books. So it will be fully covered.
Instead of waiting to three years, pay it all up front?
Yes, sir.
Does that save us any money?
It, no, sir. We can, we can bang it out for three years, but I would rather pay it off while we have it, get this off our books, and then understand what we have left to take care of other issues. More just, it's more, quite frankly, sir, it's more, lessen the bookkeeping so she doesn't have another line.
My only thing is, I feel like if we owe them for three more years, something goes wrong, we can say, hey, we stole your money, or there can be like a clause where we can say, we're not done paying for these and this went bad. So, so my mindset would be, don't, you know, it's like when, when the guy did my bathroom and I gave him all the money upfront and he didn't come back and finish and still my shower had, this is a true story. Nothing works, nothing's put on, it's a disaster. So I, I always like to say, hold on. So when my friends all got married, I tell them, hey, don't pay your contract until you're done, even till your TV's hung up, every little plug. So just kind of my mindset, ultimately, you guys can make that decision. I'd like to see us make minimum payments to them until we're completely paid off. In case something does happen or, you know, they don't honor our warranty, we can go back and forth and maybe somewhere in our clause to hold it against them.
Understood.
Thank you.
A few questions. I thought we, so these are, the body cameras are, every, how many years do you update them or?
So within the contracts, sir, there's.
Do they update, do they update them automatically with the contract or?
Within the contract, there is one refresh during the cycle, as well as, this also takes into account car cameras, the car system, and the interview rooms. So it's a entire ecosystem within the department. So it does have one, and also, part of it, I thought, was some of the TASER stuff too, but that's negligible for this. So, direct answer to your question, it's one refresh during the contract cycle.
What does he usually charge after that, you know?
After, charge for what, sir?
For the reset, whatever he's asking for.
We, that would have to be another contract discussion, I, I couldn't.
I'm, I'm just thinking like, off the top of your head, what do you think, something, like, I wouldn't even know, like a ten thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand?
For a refresh on a body camera, let's say, I'll just, give or take two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand? Give or take, I mean, I'm, I'm totally guessing here.
And so, my other question is, the flock cameras, the license plate readers, isn't that also paid through the forfeiture or no?
We'd have to look and see how that's charged, I think it might be, but the, the fee on that is, off the top of my head, thirty thousand, I think. Smaller amounts do come out of forfeiture, sir. Those are things that we're able to assign to federal forfeiture and they, you see them on the monthly bill pay.
Is that a month-to-month contract or do you guys pay yearly?
I'd have to get back to you, I don't remember. I think it's year. Most of those don't bill on month, it's too administrative cumbersome. I think it's a year, thirty thousand a year. I, I wanna check that one.
And those are integrated into, into the system, right?
Which ones are we talking about, sir?
The license plate readers.
Okay, so there's, just so, I wanna make sure we're clear. There's flock license plate readers, that's within the ecosystem throughout the region. And then our body worn camera and car solution have an LPR component to it. Which one are you speaking about?
Both, I'm saying, are they combined?
No, sir, they're not.
So they're two separate systems?
Seventy-five thousand.
For, for what?
For, for the reset and.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's. I didn't, I didn't know, I'm just, I, I like to.
Yeah.
Be familiar, and I'm sure, anywhere between a hundred thousand and seventy-five thousand.
And we're also looking, because we use the Axon product on the TASER seven, I believe it's called now, trying to bundle all that together to save as much money as possible in the future because it's just, we, we have to provide that forethought. They're important, less lethal tools for us to have, along with our in-car and body worn cameras.
Thank you.
Is that all it?
That's it.
Chief, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We're here. We're here. Told you that'd be easy, huh?
So, you're welcome. The next one is the emergency manager department.
We have a lot to say about this guy.
And the final one for the night, so.
Good evening, Counselor Chair, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Whoa, there's two of you guys. So is this who the new part-timer is?
Those multiplying, sir.
Crop backup. So, go, starting at the first line, we have the salaries of the emergency manager at seventy-five thousand. The next line item is part-time, and that is the overnight staff for approximately three overnight events.
Maybe eighty thousand dollars?
I have a lot to say.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, I just have a quick question. Hold on. Is it eighty thousand dollars for somebody to stay overnight?
So that is for three people per night for each event.
Where, where are they staying?
I will let Bob speak to that or our new.
Please, can you speak into the mic? Those would be onsite staff people who actually run the shelters.
So we have sheltered, but what if we don't use them all year?
Then we don't spend the money.
And we're giving them twenty-two hundred dollars a night? Because if you do the math, that sort of comes out.
Well, okay, historically, okay, when I was the emergency manager, okay, when we did shelters, I did the majority of them myself.
Honorable man.
Yeah, okay, thank you, appreciate that. Again, recently, again, it was brought to my attention that the city desired to open shelters at multiple sites, okay?
I agree.
North and South End, okay, great. Again, because I'm no longer in the emergency management picture. Frankly, if, if we wanna run those shelters the way they need to be run without somebody like me who's gonna do it, just showing up and taking care of it, we have to have the people in place to do it. For safety reasons, I'm recommending a minimum of three people overnight. Again, because a lot of them are, are, are ladies who will, who will work and it's just, in my mind, not safe.
How do you apply for this job? I, I wanna do it. I wanna do it for twenty-two hundred dollars a night.
Yeah, well, that, well, we're talking three people per night, okay? Again, again, we're, we're dealing with a twenty-four hour basis. Okay, so now just per, per evening. So we've got three people per night, twenty-four hours, and, I gotta think back, it's been a while since I looked at this, two shelters, and those would be four-day events.
No, but I want you to know, you're paying somebody seven hundred and thirty-three dollars to do that. It's a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. I would, I, all I'm saying is.
Okay, yeah.
I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
Sure.
Now, my next question is, how do you choose who those three ladies are? Why couldn't it be men?
We would have to go, well, I mean, ultimately, it would be a mixture, okay? This, this was set through the, our HR department, through the director.
This is very nice for my HR department.
No, okay. Again, frankly, I don't, I don't care if it's a, if it's a man or a lady running the program, okay? But we need, my, my estimation, we need a minimum of three people there for safety reasons.
I'm gonna ask you one more question, and I'm not trying to drill you, Rob, you know how I feel about you. I'm, I'm just trying to process, that's all I'm doing. I don't want you to feel offended. You were able to do it by yourself, and you said, because you had the capabilities of doing it. Why do you feel that Mr. Farhead does not have the capabilities of doing it on his own? And I'm not trying to take a shot or trying to get you guys to bicker back and forth, I just, I know he's a Michigan fan, that's a really bad start right off the rip. You know, you know, he can't comprehend it as a Michigan fan.
My, my, my opinion is, again, I just did it on my own.
You're the best at doing it.
Thank you, but conscience-wise, again, if there are going to be ladies present, we need more than one person there.
So let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Instead of budgeting for this eighty thousand dollars, I'm, I'm gonna be completely against any part-time position because in reality, this position was part-time before you even moved over to full-time. I've asked the mayor a couple of times to bring this before us because it's the right way to do it. You ask council to go back to full-time, even if you have enough money to cover you to pay your part-time position or the full-time position from the old part-time position, you still need to come before council. Because that's, that's the way the charter tells you to do it. I'm gonna tell you, I'm not okay with having this available. I, I don't think we need this part-time position to be put aside. I think if you were capable of doing it, I'd love to believe, and, and I have full trust in Mr. Farhead being able to do it on his own. I think he and I can both agree, and I think now that he feels like he's getting somewhat of a challenge, I think he's more than, you know, capable of doing such.
Yeah, and these, of course, keep in mind, these were done before Mr. Farhead came in.
And, and I can tell you right now, and Mayor, hold me to it, if there's a situation where you guys are shorthanded and, and you need somebody to be at any of these places, I one hundred percent, on the record, are telling you, you can count on me to volunteer that entire day. As long as my family's not in danger, I am there to volunteer that entire day, because that's what I would do, and I think many people in this community would do the same. So I think we, we need to find, there, there's two.
Okay.
There's, there you go. Two women and one man.
There has to be some, there has to be some degree of training, obviously, that, that they would, everyone would have.
One hundred percent.
Obviously, obviously. Um, if that's the case, this guy I want to talk to, he's the emergency manager.
Council chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so, for the last two storms we had, uh, it was, uh, was actually, uh, had, uh, complained from coun, somebody from council, that they did not like the way things were done, and, uh, that we had to actually request, Mr. Ankrup was handling one, but we also had to request other employees to also volunteer, so we had to go to Parks and Recs. Uh, so they brought us a few, uh, part-time employees to actually fill in. So it was never one person, there was several employees that were part-time that actually covered.
Mayor, I think I remember seeing that email, I think the council member, uh, and I'm going to publicly say it, it's Councilman Sob was upset, and he was upset because nothing was prepared, nothing was ready, they weren't open, it was, it, it was, it wasn't organized properly, and it's nothing against Mr. Ankrup, like, you can't expect him to do it all on his own.
He was the chair.
That's why he was upset, Mayor. So if we're going to say the truth, I was a part of the email chain, we want to say, we want to be transparent, honest and being truthful. The truth was, we failed as a community, including myself. We, we failed as a community to our seniors and to our residents, because we were not prepared or ready, um, while other cities were, were taking, being proactive and taking other initiatives. Uh, so that was the reason, I don't think eighty thousand dollars budgeted for part-time on potential emergencies is the way to go or the answer to it. Also, the position was also part-time, so you can also expect Mr., and Mr. Ankrup, this does not reflect you at all, this reflects us all as a whole, including myself. I don't want the mayor to think that I'm blaming him, because I am definitely not doing it. So for the record, Mayor, I am not blaming you, so please don't be offended, we as a community, but you are the mayor, we as a community failed, and that's why I think the councilman was upset, uh, and, and that was the truth.
Okay, cou- cou- quick, a couple of quick points on that, uh-
Actually, I'm going to let the mayor go first.
Okay.
And then I'll let Councilman Sob and then you.
We did advertise the council chair, so we did not-
Late.
We did, we did, no, we-
Late.
Last event, no, we had, we had it on, if you go back, we did have advertised-
Late.
That the centers were open.
I know, late. It was, it was while the storm had already began, we, we were delayed and then-
We had, no, nothing overnight, is what it was.
We did have it overnight, Mr. Ankrup was there.
I think we did two years ago.
I've seen it.
I think this year we didn't have anything overnight.
No, and, and basically what happened was, uh, again, in the midst of the storm, um, I was there, I stayed till, uh, after, a little, ten o'clock in the evening.
Yeah, I remember, I spoke to-
Virtually, virtually no, uh, no interest shown at all, no calls, no visitors, no nothing. Figured by, by probably ten-thirty, nobody's going to show up.
But how are people supposed to call if they don't have power?
Well, they didn't show up either, though.
Something. Something, there's topic from calling.
So, council chair, I, uh, so if we had people from Parks and Recs, Shaw, could you pull up that we were paying these individuals a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour? Is that how much we were paying them?
No, this was based on what he said, what HR-
No, 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 nothing to do with Mr. Ankrup, the mayor just said that they reached out to Parks and Recs, and they had part-time employees helping out, that they were getting paid, were they getting paid one eighty-five an hour?
No, because Mr. Ankrup said nobody showed up but him.
No, the mayor said, oh, excuse me, Mayor, the mayor said, uh, the mayor said that they reached out, Parks and Recs, and they came out and helped.
I don't know.
I don't know what your question is, council.
Okay, my question is, I want to remove the eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I agree with you, I don't, I was never going to believe that on there.
Okay, we can move on to the next slide.
So you, what, council chair?
Yeah.
So you don't want us to be prepared, then, just go and remove it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we won't be prepared for next storm.
I think, I think we're well more than prepared now that you went from part-time to full-time, because at one point, two years ago, Mayor, you said that this position is not necessarily needed for full-time, and you switched it to part-time. You came back now, and you're saying, I want to move to full-time, we said, okay, which you still haven't brought in front of us.
Council chair.
Now you're saying, hang on, Mayor, please, I'll let you speak, now you're saying, we're going to go to full-time, plus an eighty thousand dollars put to the side, which we have no way of going through the hiring process on this, we're just going to give you the money, you're going to hire and, and, and put anybody there, and if we don't use it, we don't use it, you're right. What I'd like to be able to see is, we have over a million, over one point five million dollars in overtime in the police department, if there's an emergency in our city, guess what, we can use more overtime to help that out, we don't need to budget eighty thousand dollars in emergency, uh, department.
Move it.
I did.
And then, uh, council chair, about the part-time to full-time position, is that ever going to be brought in front of council for approval?
Well, yes, it is, I'm, and we're approving it for this year, but I think going on, moving forward, if the mayor, uh, wants to follow the charter, he should bring it before us.
Council chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, Bob, so, I remember there was a, a day when there was everybody at the, uh, Richard A. Young Center, they were giving out the buckets with the cleaning supplies, and is, is that what we're talking about, or was that something different?
No, this would be-
That was for the floods.
This would be, uh, when, when there's a power outage, particularly when the weather's freezing, uh, we have to set up shelters with cots, we work with the Red Cross, uh, so people could stay, uh, on an extended basis.
Thank you.
Yeah. I got a question for you before, I'm sorry, Mr. Farhead, as we get down here to supplies, we have very little of supplies. My thing is, and I know the county gives us, and I know the state gives us, and the federal department gives us, but I think we also need to do our part to our residents and be prepared, and be proactive, because instead of setting aside eighty thousand dollars, I give a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour for people to potentially sit on the side, I think what we need to have is being prepared with, if there is an outage, what can we provide to our residents? And not wait and scramble and say, oh my God, we didn't know this was going to happen, why aren't we people being, why aren't we setting aside a, a supply budget to say, hey, we know that you guys are out, look what we've done, here are these flashlights, here are these hand warmers, here are these, uh, and so we need to be proactive, not by saying, being proactive is giving eighty thousand dollars to part-time positions, but having proactive ten thousand dollars in supplies and saying, you know, we purchased X amount of flashlights, we purchased X amount of raincoats, we purchased X amount of ponchos, we purchased X amount of dollars worth of hand warmers, we purchased X amount of dollars worth of blankets, you know, at least so that we can give back, uh, in certain different ways. So I, I would like to see an increase of ten thousand dollars in supplies.
Council chair, they do have it in miscellaneous expenses, if you see line eight or seven, that does cover seven K for the food for shelters, whilst leaves you with about almost, close to four thousand dollars.
Council chair, doesn't FEMA provide, uh, such items to-
Yeah, but that's-
No, 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 just there's a, there's a program, I believe, that they, just in general, for storms.
Was this a rhetorical question when you asked me, or did you already tell the answer?
No, I'm just, I'm saying, have we ever approached, or, I know you guys obtain buckets for floods, stuff like that, but I know through the Red Cross-
I picked one up from Lee in the past, where it came with like a, a brush and a broom, and we used it to take the, you know, my basement flooded, and, and we just threw everything away after with-
Yeah, those are the, yeah, those are the cleanup kits, and we still have those, uh, those come through a number of sources, uh, the Red Cross, FEMA does supply them from time to time, uh, so on and so forth. As a matter of fact, we still have a bunch of those here, uh, in city halls, just in case, okay?
Okay.
As far as other materials, flashlights, things of that nature, I don't-
Blankets, hand warmers, ponchos.
I don't recall anything like that in recent times being, being offered through FEMA.
No, no, I'm saying, why can't, we should be providing-
I agree with that, I, I have no problem with that at all.
Is there grants for that stuff?
We can, we can do the research on it. Uh, I, I don't know if, uh, if there's anything specifically for that, that purpose or not, we have to investigate it and see. But I, again, I have no, no problem at all, uh, about having that stuff available.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that, that's much needed, but go ahead, Mayor.
So council chair, uh, so we have, every other week, we have, uh, a meeting with the forty-three communities with the county-
Yep.
And that's some of the stuff that we talk about. So the county does offer some, but not, not everything, so if we need grants, we would have to apply for something specific, and you have to wait till something happens before you get something. So that's for the, the previous FEMA, so we have to actually, something has to happen before we ask them for help.
Okay, yeah. Um, I, I joined some of those meetings that, and, uh, that happened with, uh, Wayne County, with, I get those emails, and I've joined a couple of them, and, yeah, they're very, very helpful.
Yes.
Ms. Farhead, you should join them a couple of times, I'm sure you have in the past, or probably have recently too.
Yes, uh, just to let you know, council chair, uh-
Yes.
I, since taking, uh, my position, we have tried to, to go out, reach out to other partners, like Forgotten Harvest, we reached out to American Red Cross, so we could open that channel, just in case something happens, so we could have the open lines of communications-
Great, that's amazing, Mr. Farhead.
-with these organizations, because in my, in the community where I worked before, we dealt with them, and we had very success with these organizations, so.
Good, building of solutions, good early on.
You make up a good point, uh, some necessities we should have a list.
Hundred percent, you know, like, if an emergency happens, I mean, we should be, I'm not saying that we're FEMA, I'm not saying that, you know, we're going to be able to give everything away, I'm saying is, let, let our, let our residents feel like we care.
Yes.
That's all.
I, I'll assure you myself, and, uh-
I know, Mr. Far-
Bob will sit down, we'll put a list together of items-
Look, you're the expert at this, this is your position.
Thank you.
All I'm saying is, I want to make sure that you're equipped properly, um, and spending, you know, and, I'm not saying it's wasteful spending and, and setting up part-time positions, I'm sure those positions are important, I think we can allocate the funding elsewhere so that we can provide to our residents, that's all.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions on this?
So I would like to see, even though I know Councilman Ahmad is like, hey, you know, we have enough, on the, uh, food and shelter, leaving a seven K, but let's make it an even ten, will you do that?
Food and, you should supplies, then you talk about supplies.
Yeah. Just having even ten thousand dollars, knowing that, God forbid, and if you don't use it, you don't use it, but if you need it, let's be prepared, you know? We're seeing a, uh, what, what do they call it, like a brownout, or like, certain people's, um, wifi is going to be put out this year, because, you know, what's happening with the server, it's becoming so strong, I was just hearing it on the news, we need to be prepared.
Yeah.
That's all.
I think we can go higher than ten if more is needed to make packages for people, because you're, we're giving support back to the community.
Yeah. I think- Looking into the, uh, equipment that we're going to possibly discuss with council, and if it's something that's going to be over ten, we'll let council decide.
Yeah, that is good.
We can just pray nothing would happen.
There you go, nothing happens.
Of course, that's what we're all for.
Opening storms this year.
And then, just finally, Mayor, uh, at the next council meeting, would you like me to put it on the agenda, or will you be bringing it on the agenda?
It's up to you, council chair.
You're the mayor, it's your position, I'd like you to bring it.
We'll put it up.
Thank you. Any other questions?
For the trail, training, I know for new persons, so you're going to need all that training?
Yes, uh, I, I looked at some of the calls for the conferences, and they're pretty expensive, even locally, sir, in Grand Rapids, they're pretty costly for hotels and stuff.
You're saying at the five-star hotels, huh?
Not really, Grand Rapids.
So what, the last one, what room are we trying to bring up to speed? Line nine-eight-one for four thousand dollars?
Oh, that would be, uh-
Go ahead.
That's okay.
It's the current room that, um, would be used for the shelters, so to bring that room up to speed.
How many shelters do we have, don't we, just one?
It's in the basement, you're talking about-
What I had planned on for that one was, uh, not so much the shelters per se, but I wanted to split out our, uh, EOC, Emergency Operations Center, uh, that, uh, hasn't seen many upgrades recently, and, uh, we need to bring it up to speed. Uh, our laptops are sadly deficient, uh, I was able to get a grant from the county, uh, for some laptops, but there are other things in there that need to be upgraded, and, uh, that would, that would cover the, uh, the, the EOC for us.
Can you use the PEG funds for computers?
No. No.
Not for that?
No, not for that, that's not an acceptable, uh, price, or not, not an acceptable cost. But again, the, the computer, the, the laptops are already there now, we have, we have the laptops through the grant, through the county, but, but again, there are other, other materials in there, that are frankly worn out and, uh, in bad shape, they've, they've got to be upgraded.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Hearing none, we should be good to go?
We're good.
Thank you. Michelle, great job, Ms. Farhead, welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming to our meeting today.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing and seeing you more often.
Us?
Darn it, why the hell did I log on? I am so sorry, I completely forgot.
You know I've got a list, well.
Absolutely.
I'll be fast, I'll be super fast.
No, please take your time, I don't know, I thought it was just, I don't know why I thought-
You're tired, and my kids are texting me, so it's the same thing, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's Monday.
Rachel Little, Merrick Street, all that fun stuff, uh-
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Already did that.
Thank you.
Uh, building department, I was going to say, maybe if we can deal with those old, old cars for another year or two, um, and give, use that funds for the rates for the deputy. That was when that discussion was happening, but I don't know if it even matters at this point, because of the way everything was moving. Um, but I, just like at home, run that car as far as we can if we can do repairs, but I don't know how that's going. I think it would be a good idea to do a study session on pay, to sort of standardize directors, deputy directors, non-union employees.
I agree, I like that.
Um, kind of get that standardized and figure it out. Um, it seems like that we might be double budgeting the city's, city engineer salary, if it's in the salary line, and then each department's also setting aside funds, or is it just kind of washing out? I wasn't sure how that was working, it got a little confusing.
So what I'd like, actually, on that, is give me a breakdown, what he's, you know, put on each department what he's using, and what we are expecting for his salary.
Okay.
Um, because what she's right, was, when I, every time I go through a different department, I'm seeing engineering, um, so what I'd like is just one personnel chief for engineering, this is how much money he's making, because he's operating through these seven different, um, uh, departments, and what he's expected to use out of each department, that's all.
And then maybe if you could forward that to me, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, well, it'll be going to the public, I would like it online as well.
When, the conversation about how much the Building Department brings in in terms of permits, I would say it's pretty low because it's pretty common knowledge in the city that you do your work on the nights and weekends, so you don't have to get a permit. Everybody talks about it. I won't even get into the bribery stuff. But I will just say that that's kind of like, if we want to increase that revenue, then we need to increase enforcement on nights and weekends, on permits. So that's, that's really my only thought on that one. I'm not sure what the ordinance director was talking about, saying we only have two vehicles, because we leased seven for ordinance. So I don't know why I said we only had two vehicles. We should have at least seven leased. I looked it up in the motions.
No, he said that he would have two available for the three positions we're hiring, so we need one.
So, because we've got five right now, so we need to get one more vehicle.
So he said we can use the old animal ordinance truck, because he said it was not fuel efficient, so we would rather use them.
Okay. Again, confusing with numbers, isn't it? And then, I fully support Studio A, and the tech, and the ceilings is a big thing. Theater world, you got to have ceilings because you don't want to look like a ghost when the lights are shining down on you. And for the emergencies, I would say, ask the residents what they need, not flashlights. Battery-operated vanity lights are so much better for when the power goes out. And I will show you what I mean. I'll send you a picture, Mel.
We'll work together on that with Mr. Farhead.
Like, that's the thing, like, doing a survey or something, like, talking to people about, like, what do you actually need? Like, there are people that need shelter space. There are people that might just want to go use the shower at Richard A. Young. However, whatever those needs are, like, if we could do more talking to the residents and finding out exactly what we need, those kind of little weird things, I think that'd be really good. I think it would help build the community up, too.
Maybe a town hall.
To do that proactive planning, like, we know we're going to flood again, right? If we all plan together, I think it'd help us get through that flood again, too. But yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any other comments on the public?
You know I was going to come up. It looks like they fixed the microphone. Good. Vince Strabkowski, Columbia Street. I'm not against anybody being hired by the city or anything like that, but sometimes you have to do more with less. Okay? We have three capable officers that are capable of running an emergency management program. Why are we hiring an extra person to do that? That just doesn't make any economical sense to me. You already have gentlemen on your staff that are capable of doing it. You're talking about being over budget and everything. So look into it. That's what I would be doing. And as far as this studio, this was supposed to be another studio. Burling is more than fine. If you're worried about lighting, there's certain things that are called diffusers. Yes.
I don't finish this time, ma'am, please.
I was a part of the original City Eight crew, so I know what's over there. You can't expand that building or go into another room, where some of the rooms have been taken apart and made one giant room. So, but if you're looking for, if you're looking for high ceilings or anything like that, well, you know, how about we put one of the studios over at the Justice Center, use the Dollar Dig Room, or use the little court office in the front there? That'd be the only place you could do it, that you could probably allow the public into. Any other, there are restrictions on where the public can go, yes. So, or, I'm sure there's plenty of buildings along Joy Road that are available for rent, or another room here in City Hall. Oh, you really don't need a corporation studio. We're not doing a live NBC broadcast. Okay, thank you for your time.
No, I'm all set, I'm all set. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we can go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom?
Council Chair? I just had a question for Michelle. Under the police budget, it says emergency manager, so it's the same emergency manager, but it showed like his salary under the police budget?
So if you'll, if you look at the personnel budget, there's a line for emergency manager, but then if you go down to the bottom, it says less emergency manager, so we take it out, yeah.
Are you going to get us some updated personnel sheets on the past?
We will, yes.
One up, one down?
With the bonuses?
We will put what the salary was last year, the salary is this year.
No. That's not what happened. Mind you, Mr. Attorney said he was going to get it for us. I don't know why he hasn't.
He hasn't gotten approval. I mean, the sooner you guys get it for us, the sooner we approve the budget, because the budget's not going to be approved without those information.
So just to repeat, Council Chair, you want the previous year's actual earnings, not their salary. You want to know what they actually made.
Correct, with the bonuses.
Okay.
I mean, you can put salary, bonus, all this stuff, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
And like we discussed with the police department, take it back to whatever was approved by council.
Or no, just bring it back. What was it last year?
That's what I'm saying. Whatever we approved, because I'm not sure who approved the new pay without coming back to us. Maybe they can pay it out of their pocket.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.